We'll call the meeting to order. It is 7:01. I would just like to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded. We are meeting remotely due to the governor's emergency order and limitations on group meetings. However, that has been expanded and we will talk about that later. The people that are currently in attendance and participating remotely are Dana Alara, Michelle Bailey, Anna Seazick, Julia Campbell, Peter Woolzick, and Michelle Horgan. And also in attendance with us is our student rep Ethan Howell and our superintendent Mary Beth Banyos, our director of whatever facilities, right? And off whatever. Special Ops, we'll call them Special Ops, Tom Gary and our assistant superintendent for all things money. Or as I recently read, they changed the name Elon Musk. The chief financial officer got changed to the king of coin. So I thought that was a funny name for crazy people. All right, so tonight we are on schedule to end our executive session at 10:05. In order to accomplish that, we have set times on our agenda and we will be endeavoring to keep to those. One of the first things on our agenda tonight is citizens comments. So if a citizen would like to speak, they are welcome to. They need to use the raise hand function and then we will recognize you. We want to let you know that you only have three minutes to speak and that Michelle Horgan will indicate when your time is coming near and then we will ask you to stop once you have spoken for three minutes. So if Jennifer Carr would like to be recognized, that would be great.
Jennifer, you should be all set.
Yep. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
You guys know the Hamilton Oneum School District has a communication issue. The meeting on the 17th, which did discuss the superintendent's performance, we couldn't hear, like literally I had to go into a room and turn my computer up as far as it will go. Because none of what you guys said could be heard unless it was in a quiet room as loud as I could possibly get it. That doesn't give me a lot of faith that I know what you guys said. In addition, I thought that the email about Jennifer Clifford, which congratulations, I'm glad she got this this new position was really disingenuous. On the meeting on the 17th, Superintendent Banyos made it very clear that Jen Clifford would be starting her duties in her new position right after April vacation. But we received an email saying she would be principal until July 1st. I listened to that list of things that she has to do. There is no possible way that she can do everything that the superintendent wants her to do and be principal of Cutler School. So if you're gonna pull Jen out of Cutler School, you guys need to be honest about that and say that to every single parent. Don't tell parents that, oh yeah, Jen's gonna be there until July 1st. When after April vacation, we're not gonna see her that often. That's not fair to the students and it's not fair to the parents at Cutler School. Be honest, be forthright and don't make people find out by listening to a meeting that was poorly recorded. And that's all I have to say.
Michelle, you're muted.
Thank you. And that is the only person who has their hand raised, so we gained five minutes. So great. So that will be the end of citizens comments and if we can just turn off the chat, that would be great. The first person to present tonight is our student rep Ethan Howell and I would like look forward to hearing from you. We did participate in the, my family participated in the Bertucci's fundraiser a week or so ago. So happy to hear what's gonna happen now.
This is Banyos. Could you enable screen sharing, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ethan, you should be all set.
Awesome. Thank you. March 2021 Student Representative Report by the Student Body Government. As many of you know, this week has been, has marked the first in which school is being taught fully in person for the majority of students. This has been a huge transition for a lot of students, especially those who've been remote for the majority of the year. It would be an understatement to say that the mood surrounding the return is mixed. For my fellow students, I've heard equal parts excitement and anxiety regarding the return. While some students are happy to see their friends and socialize, others are worried about this reduced social distancing and recent rising cases. I still strongly believe that pool testing is necessary for us to remain safely in school. And I would encourage every single parent and student watching to strongly consider signing up for pool testing if not already. Accompanying the change in situation is a new schedule which everyone in the high school is attempting to adapt to. It introduces three 110-minute class blocks with break times built in so as to reduce the amount of students in the hallways by lessening transitions between classes. It's another shift for students and the end of the year will definitely revolve around how well the student body can handle these big changes. Finally, from what I've seen, COVID safety is a big concern for the majority of the student body. And thankfully, in my experience, masks are on and most students are following the guidelines and being relatively COVID conscious. Rooms like the lunchroom tend to be crowded and hallways are certainly close quarters. However, mask wearing policies are strict and in the actual classroom, students are still almost always separated by at least three feet. I don't know what's. Sorry. I was on the wrong slide. Sorry. Many of our new class activities are reflecting the activities accompanying Spirit Week and in general, the end of the school year. Few classes are finishing up selling their class merchandise in anticipation of Spirit Week in order to make sure everyone is spirited and ready to participate. Along with hopefully raising a bit of money for each class. Car washes are also being planned for April and May as the weather gets nicer. Hopefully with outdoor events, classes can make up for a year of lackluster fundraising due to COVID. At the middle school, an online production is being made called the Golden Goose Awards and a virtual concert was held recently by the music department. Our DECA Business Club at the high school has had a lot of success recently in the state competition. After competing virtually by presenting projects or role-playing business scenarios, 12 Hamilton Oneum teams have been recognized by DECA as finalists within the state competition. Of those 12, seven teams have qualified to move on for the national conference, which will also be held remotely this year. Although I'm at risk of sounding like a broken record, Spirit Week is finally happening. Next week will mark the beginning of the majority of Spirit Week activities. Although the seniors are currently in the lead after gaining points from the March HW Gives Back fundraiser. During this Spirit Week, the student body government has tried to create a close resemblance to normal years, although there have been a few major changes made with COVID safety in mind. Large crowds will be avoided, which means that instead of gathering in the gym, students will be able to watch the sporting events livestream during their office hours. The sporting events themselves have also been altered to include more COVID-friendly activities. To help the inclusion of remote students, there will be a talent show, trivia night, and scavenger hunt all run remotely. I cannot emphasize enough the amount of work both the student body and class governments have put in to ensure that this year's Spirit Week is as safe as possible. There have been a few sacrifices made, but I can confidently say that this year's Spirit Week will be totally safe for its participants. I truly hope students will be able to find a touch of normalcy in the energy and excitement of Spirit Week and that COVID will not get in the way of enjoying an exciting end of the year. Thank you for listening.
Does anybody have questions for Ethan? Anna?
Okay, Michelle. Thank you, Ethan, as always. I was just curious to know the new schedule change. I've gotten a little bit of feedback from parents that it was, the classes felt long and that I wouldn't say that there was universal rejoicing about the schedule. So from your perspective, as much as you can tell, how do students actually feel about those longer blocks now that everyone is back in person?
Definitely. I think it's a big concern for a lot of the students and I have heard of a lot of the same sentiments about kind of the long classes, it being tough to focus. But I think it honestly depends on the class and I think teachers can do a lot to make it to kind of alleviate the boredom that comes with the 110-minute class. So it really depends on how engaging your teacher is. I think a lot of the teachers are kind of catching on and trying to move away from longer lectures because sitting through a 110-minute lecture, speaking from personal experience, is brutal. But I think with the, with the kind of breaks built in, teachers are kind of adapting better to the 100 minutes. But there's definitely still this aspect of kind of being in the same room. Learning material for 110 minutes. Tough, but I also do think it's necessary with kind of the transitions, everything involved.
Has the homework seemed less or more of the same? Are you doing more homework in school or is it still homework after school?
Um, I, I would say the homework has definitely gotten better. The, the times are meant to kind of alleviate the homework situation as I've mentioned. I, in my personal experience, I take mostly AP classes, so it's not kind of as applicable in that scenario. But I think for teachers kind of assigning like shorter assignments, it's really helpful for a lot of students to just kind of get it done in class, focus on their work and then kind of be able to relax a little bit more at home.
Okay. Awesome. Thanks for the report.
Absolutely.
Super. Alright, so we're onto new business.
Well, I just had a question. I just had one question.
Oh, sorry. Not to that. Sorry.
Um, are there any other fundraisers? Anything else we can support this year?
Absolutely. I believe both the seniors and the juniors are planning car washes for the end of the year. And I think there are, I forget exactly which class, but there, there are gonna be more restaurant fundraisers too.
Well, send it to us. We'll help you publicize it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Is it possible that girls' basketball is doing a recycling event? I feel like I saw that come across the bow. Girls, is that possible?
Something's going on at the Winthrop School.
Sports don't usually run fundraisers by student council, so I'm not sure about the girls' basketball.
Great. Thank you, Ethan. Okay, so we're onto new business. So our first item is sort of an introduction. Well, our, I don't wanna color read. Not introduction. We talked about it before. How about a review? Of the Portrait of the Graduate Planning. And this is different than the Portrait of the Graduate that is required for NEASK certification. Or I think that's not called certification. It's called something else. But anyways, it's a different thing. That is just specifically for high school. This Portrait of a Graduate is more related to our district. And so Mary Beth has provided us with two, three exhibits on this and is gonna speak on it.
Great. So what I'm gonna do next is share my screen so I can speak a little bit more about Portrait of a Graduate. If any, we also have Tom here who ran the RFP process. So if there are any questions around that, he would be happy to answer that. But I think a good way to start is with, you know, just a reminder about what this concept is and why it's important. So again, I'm gonna share my screen. And, and start by saying that the Portrait of a Graduate is something that has become somewhat of a national trend in a lot of school districts. And the idea behind it is that the district gets really clear on its vision around what are the skills and dispositions that students should have when they graduate high school. One of the exhibits that is in the agenda is a recent article that came out from a number of company CEOs identifying the, this is what we're looking for in new employees. So as part of the Portrait of a Graduate process, there is an opportunity to be future-focused and look at, again, what are the skills and dispositions that students will need when they're in college and as they enter the workforce. These, as this community conversation takes place, the community gets clear about what its vision is for its school district. And I think that that's some work that, that hasn't been done in Hamilton Oneum in a while. So engaging the community, talking about what are the outcomes that, that are wanted and needed for students. And then what you see here are examples of different portraits of a graduate that different districts across the country have developed as part of this process. And the Portrait of a Graduate becomes somewhat of a North Star that as you're thinking about strategic planning, as you're making decisions, this document and, and this description helps to identify where it is, what is the outcome this district is looking for. So be prior to starting the strategic planning process, the, the work of forming a Portrait of a Graduate would be done. The timeline for something like this would be starting in late August and having a final deliverable in December. Again, this would be something where we would be engaging a Portrait of a Graduate design team that would have community members, students, parents, teachers, all coming together to talk about what is, what is the vision for this community. I would envision that we would do some type of district surveying so that everybody has a voice in terms of what the vision is. And then again, once this vision is complete, it can be the outcome document when you're thinking about strategic planning. If this is what we want for our students to have when they graduate, what is it that we need to do as a district to provide them with the types of experiences that will allow for that outcome? What you have, what you've also included in these exhibits, and I'm gonna stop my share for right now. It, or I'll show one other thing. One of the things that is an approach in terms of building a Portrait of a Graduate is this phase. The first phase is just engaging, having everybody understand what's happening. We would set up a design team of community members. We would create a visual, much like the ones I just showed you, that tells the story of what this district has as its portrait. And then there would be a formal plan implementation. So that is the, the process that we would go through. And the recommendation that you have in front of you this evening is that we work with an organization called Patel for Kids that also is connected to a group called EdLeader 21. And EdLeader 21 was the, the founding group for the concept of a Portrait of a Graduate. And this is the, the group that has done most of the work nationally around it. So that is what, you know, I am putting in front of you in terms of a way to create a vision for this district. As you'll recall, one of our district goals this year is to start the process of developing a vision and a strategic plan. So this process would be the first step in getting that done. And maybe before I turn it over to questions and comments that you might have, Tom, can you walk the committee through the RFP process that we went through for Patel for Kids?
Sure. I'd be happy to. I believe we originally, Superintendent, you brought this to the committee back in the fall. At that point, we listened to some feedback of reaching out to some more firms. So just gonna count one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven firms that have a focus on strategic planning in this type of work. Who I reached out to, developed the scope after interviewing Superintendent Banyos, came up with the generic scope to be able to send to these companies, so it was not favored towards one particular vendor. Of the seven, I received two responses. Patel for Kids and Bain Consulting. Bain's response to us was that they would not be able to take on the work at this time. I did, not only did I send them out, I sent it out with delivery confirmation and read receipts. So kept those on file. The groups we reached out to were Panorama, Patel for Kids, McKinsey, Parton on UI, District Management Group, Deloitte, and Bain. And, you know, we did receive a pretty substantial package from Patel for Kids using the matrix that we came up with. They scored 92.5 points out of 100 with the scoring that we include with the requests for qualifications and proposals. So happy to share that if anybody's interested in seeing the document. But I feel that it was a fair process and really tried to get as much response and it was a little disappointed that we only got one response. But it was a worthy response, to say the least.
Wait till it comes to bus contract time. You only get one response. It's really disappointing. Great. Thank you. I just wanna note that David Toledo has joined us at 7:22. So he's participating remotely. Hi, David. We're just getting started on the Portrait of a Graduate, so.
Yeah, no, I saw that. I actually had to pop off because my video was messed up, so.
Fantastic. Awesome.
Back again.
If I can, Madam Chair, too, since David is on here, David was most helpful by sending along some companies for us to reach out to. So thanks to Mr. Toledo for that. Did help us kind of spread out who we were gonna send it to. So thank you.
Alright, so do people, so we are at 7:23, so we've got about 20 minutes to discuss this. Do people have questions? Anna?
Thanks, Michelle. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mary Beth, for all of that information. I do have some questions and just a couple thoughts. One thing that seemed to be missing, or at least for me, clarity about where it would happen is the actual community engagement in the proposal. There's references to suggesting competencies through an online tool and a communications toolkit. Those are both on page six of the proposal. But in the meeting schedule, they outlined, I didn't see an actual meeting with the group facilitated and directed towards community engagement, which I thought seemed like a real hole in the proposal. Can you describe where community engagement would actually happen in this process? And who would lead it, how, you know, a little bit more detail there?
Yeah, so the, the process would be co-led by the superintendent and a member of the Patel for Kids team. There, there would be an opportunity to talk about what are often referred to as landscape shifts in terms of, again, skills and dispositions that, that students need. That information can be provided both to the community and what would be termed as a Portrait of a Graduate Design Group. So this design team or this design group would be made up of representatives of different stakeholders. So you would have parents on that. You would have students on that. You would have administrators on that. You would have educators, teachers on that. And that group would be the, the primary group that is coming together and trying to pull the information into a formal portrait. As part of their processes, they would be collecting information in terms of community thoughts around the matter. So that could look like a district-wide survey. That could look like some, if it's virtual Zoom meetings where people come together and that, that is offered at different times and locations across the community for people to come in and give feedback. They may, for example, rate of all the landscape shifts that may be happening and the impacts for what that would mean for educating student. What's, what's most important to you? What is really, from your perspective, a non-issue? So along with the design team, there would be events and experiences planned that go beyond that single group to the entire community. And then ultimately, the, the portrait would come in front of the school committee for a formal vote and adoption. And we would be providing you the feedback that is received from the community prior to you making that decision. And you'll have the recommended portrait from the design team group.
Okay. Thank you for that. This question is a little bit for both of you, maybe a little bit Tom. And I don't mean this to sound overly critical, so I understand that you went back to the RFP process because I was the one who raised a concern in October. But I have to tell you, the list of companies that you bid it out to, McKinsey, Deloitte, Bain, I mean, those are among the biggest international consulting firms in the world. And it does not surprise me one iota that we didn't get a callback on most of it because we bid out a $25,000 to $35,000 project to companies that routinely handle contracts, you know, 20 times that scale. Like, this is nothing. So I have to tell you, I'm not surprised based on that list. And while I totally appreciate the effort that went into it, the fact that we only have one viable bid still troubles me because I still have concerns about the bid. I'll set that aside for a second. But one thing I didn't see addressed in any of this that I had mentioned back in the fall is that DESI has a Planning for Success whole, whole toolkit that the state provides. And they have a plan and they have a structure and they have a list of Massachusetts-based consultants who help facilitate this. So I guess two part one, I, I'm not convinced that the RFP process was as robust as it should have been. And I think the results we got reflect that. But two, why didn't we go through the state-built Planning for Success module that exists for this very purpose?
Yeah, I will speak to, again, the, what we're trying to look at is a Portrait of a Graduate and in engaging in work with folks that have, that have led this type of community formulation prior. So the, the state piece, I do not believe is targeted to a Portrait of a Graduate outcome. So that, that is, this is, I would say, the gold standard of, of organizations related to Portrait of a Graduate work. There may be other versions of it, but this is, again, the group that initiated this type of national level work. They are well-organized. Their outreach in terms of communities are really, is really strong. And they are, you know, and so we did put it out. I mean, I, I stepped out of the process because I have worked with Patel for Kids and asked Tom and Vinnie to take this over and manage the procurement so that there wouldn't be any question as to how we've conducted this search. So I'll, I'll stop there and see if you wanna add anything.
No, that makes sense. I mean, I just wanna raise that as a concern and sort of self-fulfilling. And I don't, we don't need to go back to that, but I will say, the plan itself, as I raised before, I am still sort of fundamentally troubled by this proposal as someone who looks at grants and applications and things like, it is full of just, I would call it hollow industry speak, like a whole bunch of words that don't really explain anything in particular. So I still find it kind of thin, to be honest. Like, it's still, to me, there's not enough meat on the bones. I also have a little bit of concern about some of the price points on it. So in building back through what they're gonna do, there are clearly existing templates and formulas. Like, they have a whole formula that they apply. So they'll put Hamilton Oneum through their formula. Even looking at the design work, there's a clear recycling of the templates. Almost every single thing has the central logo and then there's a circle and then there's some core values around the circle and it's sort of color-coded. But just from an overall, like, process, it feels very formulaic to me. So I have a hard time looking at that low-level bid price of $32,000 for, when I looked at it carefully, there's one orientation meeting, four design team meetings, a closeout meeting, monthly phone calls. There is design work with two to three options and two to three rounds of iterations and then some creation of these digital tools. So if you look at all those, and they gave, I was actually, I was really helpful. They gave hourly estimates. So if you take those six formal meetings, and I gave them the benefit of the doubt, I rounded up to three hours each. That's 18 hours. Monthly phone calls, there's five months between August to December. That's two hours each. Again, I figured that's a long monthly phone call. So that's 10 more hours. And then for sort of the recycling of the design work, I, I felt like I was pretty generous as a consultant. I said, I'll give you 40 hours there, right, of like work to run this through. So I feel like being fairly generous, that's 68 hours of work at $32,000. So I feel like being fairly generous, that's sixty-eight hours of work at thirty-two thousand dollars, like, that's almost five hundred dollars an hour that we're going to pay out to do it, so like I have a really hard time with that number, and that was for the digital-only option, that wasn't even hands-on, which I think some of this work does need to be hands-on, so. I'm not loving the proposal, and now that we really only have one, I am concerned. And then this last question kind of is more nuts and bolts about the budget. I know that when we passed the last budget, we talked about twenty thousand dollars for Portrait of the Graduate, I think was in the superintendent's line item budget, Vinnie, but I'm not sure. Or is this going to come out of the fiscal year twenty-one capital plan? Where is the money coming from? And is thirty-two thousand dollars actually what we budgeted? Because I thought we had only budgeted something like twenty.
I'm gonna take that, Mary Beth.
Sure, and then I can add to it if you need me to.
Yep, so I'm opening up right now, but I believe you're correct, we did budget twenty thousand for Portrait of a Graduate, but that was included in Mary Beth's discretionary account that I believe had about another twenty thousand dollars in it, so I believe she has.
It was like forty thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, so I think there was twenty already there for her kind of discretionary spending, and then we added twenty for this, and I believe she has a plan to kind of get get herself through the year based on that proposal that they gave us.
Thanks, Vinnie.
Yep.
Tell Horgan, and then Julia.
Hi, thank you very much for the the presentation. Mary Beth, do you feel that this is a very aggressive timeline? I'm just thinking, coming out of COVID with everyone being at their max, is this doable? Yeah, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the the timeline itself from August to December is enough time to get this done. And certainly, we're anticipating coming out of COVID. I I think we all know it has been a challenging, difficult year, and any new thing is something that should be looked at pretty carefully, given that. But when we talked about the district goals in the fall, and I I think as we continue to have conversations, that one of the things that's absolutely critical for this district is the formulation of a vision and a strategic plan. So what I would guide around this is that if you're going to prioritize anything new for the fall, that this is the work that gets prioritized. And if we're careful about what else gets added to the plate, I do, in fact, think it's doable.
Okay, and can I just follow up too? And it's, you are working closely with the leadership team to create this along with other stakeholders and students and teachers, but you're, it's collaboration with everyone, correct?
Absolutely. This has value when it is seen as a collective, community effort and that everybody has buy-in, that the committee has buy-in, the leadership team has buy-in, the entire community has buy-in around this is the vision for our district.
Thank you.
Julia?
Hi, I think it's so interesting that, I think Anna and I have the same issue, but we come at it so differently. I I'm not questioning the hour, first of all, I am a consultant, I should say that, and I write RFP, I address RFPs all the time, write proposals all the time. My concern is not necessarily the price and hours and the, you know, the nuts and bolts, but what is the deliverable? So when I read this, I wasn't really sure what exactly we are walking away with, and is it a roadmap? Is it a set of directives? And how is it? Like, could we potentially maybe do a strategic plan without this? So how is this required and necessary for the strategic plan? That was more, my question was more around, what is the tangible deliverable that we're going to walk away with?
Yeah, so I think I hear two things there, Julia. One is, is this required, and then what is the deliverable? So to your first question, do districts create strategic plans without a clear vision and without a portrait of a graduate? Yes. So could it be done? Yes. Do I think that that's best practice? No. I think it really, the strategic plan, if you you know where you're headed, becomes a far more powerful document. And and knowing what, you know, beginning with the end in mind, when you're creating a strategic plan, I think makes a lot of sense. So I I would say that, no, it's not required, but it would be best practice for some type of vision setting to occur. This is a standard, again, nationally, that's being used in a lot of places that place, even places like Niasc are using it, so that it is a good, solid, well-regarded way to set a vision. And then the the second piece that you were asking about in terms of deliverables, so there, there is part of the deliverable is the community conversation that happens, the presentations to communities, all of the the work that's done to solidify a lot of the research about what's shifting in terms of the skills and dispositions that are needed now in students. You, and and so that, all of those presentations are provided as part of this process. The the final deliverable is is a document that outlines what the the, again, characteristics and attributes of a graduate would be for Hamilton Wenham, and then descriptions as to what are the specific details. So, for example, if one of the things happened to be a global, you know, a strong global citizen, what are the the sub-bullets underneath that that we all agree are important, that help to get to a different level of detail? Again, that help to inform a strategic plan. So there, the actual document is an outline of what the the community came up with, what its feedbacks worries were, and then a graphically designed portrait that can be communicated across different schools and the community.
Thank you. And yeah, I guess my other question is, I wasn't here in the fall, so I'm sorry about the RFP process. And I know the RFP process is arduous and terrible. I I don't know, I guess I just wonder, because there was only one submitted RFP, if it, if there are other different firms that could do this, and that's definitely not my expertise, so that's just some, a little something hanging over my head, so. I guess I would just, I would just say, I I just don't know if if Desi could help, or if other school districts have done this that could offer their their vendors, or if there are Massachusetts vendors that could do this. And that's really, that's kind of, that is one of my kind of sticking points here, just wondering if there, I don't know, if there are more perspectives that could be, more firms that could be solicited. But I understand we're under a time crunch, so. I don't know, and I wasn't here in the fall, so.
All right, wanted to clarify just some language first, is that this wasn't actually a request for proposals per se, it was titled the Request for Qualifications. So one of the reasons why you don't see the deliverable and the response is because the deliverables were stated in the Request for Qualifications, right? Like, so the district reached out and said, this is what we want for deliverables. We want to see that your firm has the qualifications to carry out this work, and that's what was responded to. So we didn't just reach out and say, hey, give us your best proposal for a portrait of a graduate, we wanted to see what the firm's qualifications were, and back in the fall, I believe that's what I informed the committee the approach was going to be. It was more of a request for qualifications.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure, because that one letter is distinctly different with procurement, so.
Definitely. Thank you.
David, did you have something?
Yeah, um, excuse me, you know, sorry, obviously, I jumped in late and didn't get to hear the whole presentation, so I'll have to catch up on that, but, you know, obviously, I have caught up by some of the discussion. You know, and for Julia's sake, back in the fall, I had set out a list, I have a colleague from the City Year Board who was the Director of Strategic Initiatives for Boston Public School District, who had previously been a consultant for the Detroit Public School Systems when he was working with Parthenon, and asked him for a a comprehensive list that we can, you know, be looking at for an RFQ process, and that's where, you know, and there are also some City Year partners in here, that's like Deloitte and you know, Bain, some stuff like that, where where those came from, Monter, I actually used to work with them at City Year. So that's where some of the people from this list came from, and I forwarded that list to the school board and the superintendent. Because, you know, when we were talking about this in the in the fall, I didn't like the idea of sort of going at this with a no, with with no bid, you know, and you know, wanted to go through some sort of RFP, RFQ process to make sure that we're getting what, you know, the best we can get and give ourselves options, you know, the, I I while I'm sort of bummed to find out that we only got one bid back, it happens. We have a budget, we have to pay attention to that, right? We have a timeline, too, so like to keep this open and kicking it down the road, this doesn't do us any good. I love the fact that Anne actually mentioned the sort of graphics and the recycled graphics, because that's one of the first things I noticed, I'm like, oh, this looks like some of the, you know, some of the stuff I've taught my students to do for infographics and just sort of not reinventing the wheel. But I mean, you know what, I'd rather save ten grand and not have a custom design package and, you know, get what we need. You know, coming out the end, like I said, what I love seeing more, you know, more bids come in, sure, but I mean, we we have to get what we get. You know, and and I do appreciate the fact that Mary Beth actually did step step back from the process, having worked with one of the vendors before, so as not to sway anything. You know, and I just think that sort of going in with a budget and this sort of sticking to our guns that way is the way we have to go, right? I mean, I would, I would love to drive, you know, a Lamborghini, but I drive a Dodge because of the budget, that's what the budget allows, so. You know, it gets me where I need to go, and, you know, does a lot of good things, so. You know, I I think that's something we have to sort of look at and and say that, okay, if we want to be moving forward, this is, we've we've now sort of, even though we're not totally stoked with the results, we have to accept the results for what they are and be able to move forward now that we have them.
Right, so I am going to remind you that there is one minute until our time for this is up.
Do you see Peter's hand up?
Peter, are you going to speak or no?
I was, I didn't know I was recognized. Am I limited to one minute?
The committee is trying to keep on track, let's see what it takes.
So mine is, I I guess my, my question is a two-part question about the process. So this is the, the Portrait of a Graduate is the trend across the country. We know what education is looking like, we know what Desi's initiatives are. You know, if so many portraits of a graduate have already been completed across the country, one, can we study those and look for commonalities? And two, can, we can anticipate some aspects of a Portrait of a Graduate. We have an army of education experts here in the district. So can we get a jump start on some aspects instead of letting all this time go by? For instance, a learning management system. I mean, for instance, introducing language earlier into our education, or younger to younger students, or inviting students from out of the country or out of the district to create diversity, moving away from this hundred-year-old model of education. So can we study other portraits of a graduate, and can we already get a head start rather than waiting for this company to do something for us that I think we we already know some of the answers to?
Peter, I can offer a couple thoughts around that. One is that if you actually look at the portraits of a graduate that different districts have created, you do see some remarkable similarities because the reality is there is a pretty solid understanding of what critical skills are. You also see unique needs for each community based on their their student population the, oftentimes, the the location of the community itself and what resources it might have available to offer students. What what I have found with this is that the value is in the dialogue, right? That whenever you take something that somebody else created and processed through and debated whether this was more important than that, you know, that doesn't have the same value as when you, as a committee, a community, do that work yourself and have that local debate. So I think that the answer is, you know, both things are true, you are right. I would be really surprised if there isn't something related to communication, critical problem solving. You you almost always find that when you start to look at what are the skills and disposition students are going to need. But there, there are elements of debate around what is prioritized over one thing over another. And then what do we mean by skillful communication, or what do we mean by critical problem solving? What are the elements of that that are really helpful for students? And it's that dialogue that actually is the most beneficial part of the conversation. But I, again, I would recognize that you do see a lot of similarities, given that the the body of information about what are the skills that are important in the future is is what it is, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of expertise out there already, we might as well draw from rather than trying to duplicate what they've already, their efforts that that's already been done. Why reinvent the bicycle when we can just buy a bicycle? I just, my concern is that too much time will go by if we, if we drag this on for a year or two.
The the plan for here, this would be that the Portrait of a Graduate would be done by December.
Well, the deliverable, right, but then we would have to implement, right?
And that's the strategic, you know, then once you have the, here is our outcome, beginning with the end in mind, right, then the strategic plan is developed around that, and.
Develop a budget, vote on it.
Yeah, no, I, and I, you know, one of the phrases that I I think sometimes is helpful is to go fat, in order to go fast, you have to go slow at the beginning, right, and really work some of those things out. And that's part of the strategic planning process, and I I can appreciate the desire to get going on things right away, but that that real thoughtfulness and that consensus building about where you're headed and why actually can pay off dividends as you move forward.
All right, well, thank you. Yeah, I just like, there's so much expertise that's already been shared with this, I'd rather see us doing what we can now and then you know, tailor it to us as we move forward. Thank you.
I'm gonna say that we're going to vote on this.
You know, um.
Go ahead, Dana.
I I do really want to move towards voting. I just want to point out, I didn't get an opportunity to speak, and I know that you didn't either, Michelle.
Correct.
But in the interest of time, I'm, I will accept that we need to move to vote.
Thank you. Can you make a motion?
Sure.
I think we're going to vote to accept the recommendation to award.
Is that what we're voting on, is it to accept the recommendation of this specific vendor, or is it to accept the portrait? What what are we accepting?
You're accepting the vendor.
I move that the Hamilton One O Regional School Committee accept the Portrait of a Graduate planning as vendor, as presented by Batel for Kids, as presented on the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by David Toledo. We discussed before a motion, so we'll go ahead and vote. David?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Julia?
No.
Peter?
No.
Anna?
No.
No.
Uh, Dana?
Yes.
Michelle Bailey, yes. And is for yes, three no, that passes. Um, we are on to the next item, which is the superintendent's formative evaluation. We have set 30 minutes for this. So we have seen some of these documents preliminarily before. Um, and so today, Mary Beth will run through them quickly and then you can give any feedback.
Great. And I'm once again going to share my screen so that I can pull the exhibit up and do that quickly. Okay, so what, what you have as a committee and what the community has is a list of the superintendent's 2021 annual goals. Most of these goals are in direct alignment with our district goals. So I'll give you a broad overview of where I think we, we are and I am with each of these goals. And then would be happy to take questions and any feedback that you might have. The first one is related to developing a process and a timeline for strategic planning and to, to develop the Hamilton One O Portrait of a Graduate. So we just finished an item where we are moving the portrait of a graduate work forward. And that that is the, the design is that that is the precursor to the work for the strategic plan. So that, that is where we are in the process right now. You've seen the, the RFPs, the bids, that, so that's where we are with that particular goal. The next goal has to do with district in communication issues. So improving communication with stakeholders. So where we are at that, this point, one of the things that, that was put into place as part of this goal is a weekly superintendent's update. You have examples of what those have looked like over the course of the year. You, I also send out, as you know, a weekly update to the school committee around a variety of different issues that would be important and targeted to just school committee members. There had been one round of principal and superintendent coffee hours. That, it is unlikely that I'm probably going to get to three this year. I'm hopeful to get to two. To hear more feedback around that. I've tried to jump into conversations that I, you know, had anticipated would be particularly challenging. So for example, when we were going remote, one of the worries was how would, how would elementary Apple students feel about that? So that was a, a meeting that I attended. The, you know, one of the other pieces that we've been working on and certainly I've heard lots of feedback and couldn't agree more with it, that our website needs a lot of work. We've been doing background work, looking at, you know, who and what vendors may be appropriate for that. And one of the things that you'll see after April vacation is a survey going out to community members, trying to understand more about how they use the website. What is the most important information that they want to see there to help inform our particular process as we look to get this issue addressed? You know, we are hopeful, originally we were hopeful, maybe we could get it done by the end of the year. It has been a crazy year. I suspect that we are probably going to have to push that off until the fall. The other thing that we've been working on in terms of communication is also increasing our, our social media presence. So we, we have increased traffic at Facebook and our Twitter accounts. And so that's another place that we've been working in terms of the communication piece. Third goal is related to restoring the curriculum instruction and assessment leadership in the district. We've been involved and I know you have been involved in likely conversations about that. You know, started with surveying staff, we had a vetting group. We had a lot of one-on-one meetings with different groups of stakeholders within the district. I presented the structure to the school committee, I believe it was in October, November. Then there was a conversation regarding this during the budget process. And so at this point, we have a plan to restore the curriculum instruction and assessment leadership for the 2021, 22 school year. And we are, we also have planned to be able to move forward to work, to have that structure in place for the fall, so that we, we can hopefully hit the ground running as we begin the new school year. Goal four is related to providing high-quality instruction in a hybrid remote learning environment. This was a, a goal that many of our, our teachers took on, our leadership team took on. And there have been a number of different areas where we have been working on that. We have offered courses related to that. We've had blogs where teachers and administrators are sharing ideas about how we best do that. And one of the things that, that we still continue to struggle with is the fact that this goal was related to a hybrid learning environment. And now we're not into the hybrid learning environment. So we're continuing to refine our practice and work on practice, given the multiple different modalities of learning that we've been asked to shift to over the course of the year. One of the things that, that is just getting finalized right now is a, a summer course that will become available for secondary teachers. And the intent of that course is to actually step back and reflect about what is it about virtual learning that is worth keeping? What did we learn that is really valuable? And we want to continue to embed into our practice? And, and what are the pieces of this experience that we want to let go? But there have been things that we have learned that, that can improve our practice long-term. And having a, a set aside time in the summer where teachers can step back and say, let me integrate what's just happened over the course of the year is another way in which we're trying to address this particular issue. And then finally, I am part of the new, new superintendent induction program in Massachusetts. That group meets monthly with different coaching opportunities. And so that is something that I continue to fully participate in. So brief overview of where we are. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you have or hear any feedback in terms of how I continue to work on these goals moving forward.
Great. And can you stop the screen share for us?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Dana, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I do, and I want to, before I start, I want to say I did spend some time speaking with Dorothy Presser. Because I haven't been through this process before, and so I wanted to really understand. And I also watched last year's school committee meeting where this process was gone through with Julie, so that I could try. But I will, as Mary Beth gets to accept feedback, I will accept feedback if, if the committee feels like I'm, I, I see that going first is, you know, I may not be on track. And if I'm not, please let me know if, if you feel like, feel free to interrupt me if you feel like I'm not on track. So my understanding from Dorothy is that this is really just supposed to be a conversation in which we might be asking questions or giving a little bit of feedback. So I had on three of the goals, I had some comments or questions. The first one I had is on the portrait of a graduate goal, the strategic planning goal, number, the first goal. And my question, Mary Beth, is that sort of big picture as we look towards this, and this is kind of a little bit forward-looking, but my question to you is how would you have used a strategic plan if we had had one in place when you entered into our district in a crisis? And my reason for asking that is just to sort of understand what, how and why you see this as essential.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a great question, Dana. So one of the things that I, outside of kind of crisis management, how do you keep the district continuing to move forward? And having clarity around where this district is headed would have been really helpful. We voted some goals in October, November. Those were based on my initial findings for entry. There had been some, some initial work done, but there wasn't a, a, any kind of map about here's where we're headed and here's how we intend to get there. With a document like that, that's something that somebody can step into and say, okay, I'm going to pick it up where it was here and have a conversation with the committee. This is what you intended to get done this year as part of your strategic plan. Let's prioritize. If we have to back off of some things, what would you like to back off of? What are things that you absolutely essentially want to move forward? So that there is a, that getting the, the district headed in the, the direction it is intended to head in. And having a document that allows for those conversations to take place would have been really helpful. The other thing that I think is particularly valuable about a strategic plan is, as we know, there are never enough resources to meet all the needs and wants of the community and our parents. And that strategic plan, when you are trying to make difficult financial decisions, is something that you can fall back on and say, what did we collectively decide was the most important thing? And how does this document inform the really difficult choices in front of us?
Thank you. So, and then on the communication goal, I just had some feedback, which I think is similar to what you actually just articulated. But my feedback is that I have seen improvement in the communication and movement forward. But I think we're not there yet. I think that we're still needing a lot of work in that direction. And that both things can be true, right? That we can be improving and still, really still have quite a ways to go. And then on the curriculum goal, I guess this is sort of what I'm hoping to see. I know that it's, you know, we're just getting started on the curriculum goal. But what I would like to see, and it, it may be, again, maybe this is too forward-looking, maybe it's something for next year. But what I would really like to see in, I could imagine it being in a meeting perhaps, is I would like to see what do our leadership teams, what do our teachers directly see in the classroom? What impact is it making? How is their classroom changing? How are their students changing specifically tied back to the curriculum changes as we go ahead and make them? So I'm, I'm, I'm just, I guess it's a suggestion that that would be something that would be useful to me to have someone coming to present to us perhaps at some point about these are the things that I can directly see how it affects children and students, I mean, and teachers.
And, and just to clarify, to make sure that I understand what you're saying there, Dana. So as we put these new curriculum structures in, in place, what you would, what would be helpful to you is to have folks that are actually engaged in implementation and, and working to start to get our curriculum solidly aligned and in some cases built out that, that, that the committee has direct reports from the people that are being, that are engaging in this work and having them report to the committee how it's benefited, benefiting kids in our programs.
That was articulated the way that I wish that I had said it. Yes, um, yes. So, thank you. That would just, that's just my feedback is that going in the future, that's something I would like to see. Thank you.
We have 10 minutes left on this topic. Are there others who want to speak?
Um, yeah. Sorry. But I also think it's important that we give this due time. It deserves, i- i- it's, it's pretty major. And I know I don't want to be pushing this agenda, but maybe a half hour was a little bit ambitious. But you know, there, there's only a couple of things that I really want to say. You know, I, I, I'm wondering, and I'm sort of, you know, to, as Dana said, the, talking about the communication goals and how I, I feel that we're sort of getting a little bit better. But I'm also a little bit nervous about how much, you know, I'm looking at this as like a, as a personal. I'm sorry, just trying to think of my thoughts here because, you know, I'm wondering how much, I, I guess it's, it's bothering me and I'll just come up with, with the fact that we actually hire someone to help with our communication in the district. I understand the difficulties that we had to, you know, obviously firsthand had to overcome this, this, this year with COVID and not. But I, I think that, I mean, we hired professionals and still had poor communication for a great deal of the year. And just because it's getting better, I still don't think it's very good. And this year especially, that, that's a pretty key thing. You know, especially with all the confusion that was coming out from the, the state levels. I, I think that, you know, in our workshop on Saturday, it was put out, put really well, where, you know, you're getting information from Desi and then two weeks later it's changed. And, you know, and, and, you know, when that filters down to the community, they really have no idea what's going on. So that, then it falls on us, right? And, and I think we, we, we failed, right? If we were my students right now, we, we would get an F. So that's something to sort of look forward to, but like, it, it bothers me that we actually have professionals that are helping us with that at the same time. You know, and now I'm just starting to think of myself as I'm saying this aloud. Is this a direct review of you as a person? That, because I have been viewing this as, okay, well, how has your communication been personally? Or am I, am I viewing it as you of the CEO of the district? And how is the district communication been? Because, because that's two different, two different animals. And, and I didn't think about that until I, until I just started talking. So that's why I'm sort of a little hesitant in my voice because now I'm really, you know, and that, that's something that's really worrying me. I, I, I like this sort of, I, I do appreciate that, you know, with the district really thinking about like the, the district, the overall, the portrait of a graduate in, in strategic planning, that you've always really held your ground well on that. And I can appreciate that because, you know, in some ways, like get this stupid COVID out of my way. I have real work to do. And, and I, and I really, I, I do appreciate that. And I like the fact that, like I said, I'm still not stoked that we only got one, you know, bidder for that portrait of graduate. But I mean, it, it is what it is. We, you know, we asked you to not, to, to, to put the process out there to, to actually try and find a vendor. And, and you did, and, you know, we're moving forward on that throughout all the difficulties we've had in just circumnavigating the year. So I can appreciate that. You know, which again, just sort of goes in that student improvement goal. I think this is something that we're failing on as a district. So again, this is something that we need to think about. That I need to think about in this review process on, is that, is it a personal review or is it a district review, right? That you're the CEO, because I, I don't think, and, and this is, you know, upsets me and we were talking about this the other day, this sort of lack of immediate data access, right? The LMS argument again of about like our student improvement goals. I, I, I don't think that our students had a very good year this year, right? And so that again, reflects poorly on us. So we have to sort of take responsibility for it. You know, and then I, I do probably appreciate that, you know, you went through the new superintendent training induction program and that every single superintendent in that room is having, you know, a very similar view right now, I would imagine, right? Because it, it hasn't been a good year for anybody. You know, those are sort of my thoughts on this, on this process. Sorry if I took up too much time.
Michelle, did you have your hand up?
Actually, Anna was before me, so I'll see the floor to Anna and then I can speak after Anna. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Michelle and Michelle. And I also just want to support David. I do think we should let everyone sort of say what they need to say here. So I was like Dana, because I'm new to this, I also went back and reread the guidance and looked at the MASC to try to make sure my comments were going to be appropriate for this point of the process. So even though I could drill down on, you know, super detailed elements. So, um, even though I could drill down on, you know, super detailed elements of the goals, I know that that's for a later time. So I'll just say, um, I'll just touch upon a couple. And then I do actually have a couple of questions for you, Mary Beth. Um, and I'm, I'm also a little bit with David. I feel like the superintendent's evaluation is about the superintendent and her, her success or failure in executing and making the district functional, right? So it's not just about her individual performance, but how effective is she at getting other people to do what they're supposed to be doing, right? Because that's what, I mean, she's fundamentally an executive. She's a manager. So it's not just about her work, but other people's work as well. Because she's the leader, you know, so I, I kind of agree with David. I see this two part. High level for me, I'm struck by the number of specific deliverables that you have not met. And I don't think have the ability to meet, given where we are. And part of me was thinking about the conversation we had had on the seventeenth about saying, well, you know, but it was COVID, it was hard, it was this nut. And I keep coming up with that as sort of a hollow rationalization because the goals were set in November. And in some cases, I remember that meeting, I was really pushing to add more criteria. Um, and we scaled it back and I think we ended in a happy compromise, but you know, some of these deliverables are, you know, they're, they weren't, they weren't heavy, like coffee hours three times a year. It's not a high bar and yet you still didn't get it. So I'm struggling a little bit with, um, you know, trying to see the bigger picture, but also, you know, the whole point of setting specific of performance criteria is that you're supposed to hit them. And objectively, when I look through the list of the deliverables, there's so many that you haven't, you haven't hit. Um, so I am concerned for you in a way because I feel like we don't have a lot of time between now and the summative assessment to, to offer feedback. And I appreciate that ideally this would have happened earlier. You would have said, oh, wow, thank you, committee. That's great feedback. Now I'm going to go back and do this. So, you know, I can see that, but you know, just looking at each goal, I think I've made my concerns about the RFP process clear. I won't go into that more, but like one of the goals that came out of goal two was around managing conflict. And when I think about that goal and how you might adjust it now, I almost kind of feel like the die has been cast. You know, there are conflicts that have been erupting all over the district with parents, with teachers, with the unions. And particularly sort of troubled by the mistrust with the union that's been verbalized. So I don't know how you fix that between now and a month from now. So that's one example. Um, the, the goal three with the curriculum instruction part, I'm very uncomfortable proceeding with that as a done deal before the budget's passed. I know that you've talked about needing to jumpstart that process, but um, one of the pieces of feedback there was for part two E, the fiscal systems. And the fact that we have no buy-in from the teachers on it is sort of a criteria there is troubling to me. So that one, that one makes me nervous. So I think you've sort of checked that off as like, yes, it's in, it's going to happen. It's like, well, it isn't happening. Like I have a question there. I have a question about the teacher's supporting of it. So I have a hard time moving forward from that. And then, you know, some of the things you're touting as evidence of good news. Um, I'm kind of with David, like the good news story is twice a month. We didn't quite hit that number. Okay, fine. But it's my observation, and this was really made clear in the winter sports update, that the good news story about winter sports was produced by Craig and the PR consultant that we're paying. And so it's sort of like the thing that's supposed to be your work product, wasn't actually your work product. It was someone else's. And to David's point, we had to pay a consultant to do it. And what was interesting to me about that is that when we initially authorized that PR consultant, it was touted as crisis, COVID crisis communication. It wasn't feel-good PR stories. So from a budget standpoint, I've always been a little uncomfortable with that. So you know, and I think the other part that is troubling to me is some of the high quality instruction. I know that we're moving into um, everyone being in person, which is great. That's not true for everyone. There are still some remote families, but I feel, still feel like we have to evaluate what transpired between September to now. And if you look at some of that, you know, some of the goals again, as evidence of, of success or, you know, using Lexi and Greenbox uh, for their adaptive qualities. And I don't know if I would call that high quality instruction and it was things that we were doing last year anyway. So you know, I could, I, I could go really deep, but I won't now. I know there's a later place for that. So I guess my high level feedback for you is I would really look back at those goals and try to figure out what parts of them could still be salvaged between now and the next phase, or what could we try to improve? I do agree with Dana. I think some of the communications have gotten better. But there's, there was some really low hanging fruit that we didn't quite even get. Like it aggravates me to no end that the website. I'm not looking for an overall rehaul, but you know, there's information on there that's literally now three years old. And as the chief executive of an organization, I would have expected you to go to Alan and IT or the web vendor, or I'm not sure who Strab it is. I know it's not yours personally. I don't expect you to go into the code and fix it. But I would have expected you to say, wow, in an era of digital information, to have website information about the prior superintendent's search still on our homepage. It's just a bad look. And I would have hoped that you would have said, I don't, Alan, don't rebuild the website, but hide that page, you know, delete that page. Or the issue that came up recently with the school's start time, like that was a really important piece of basic information. So I do share disconcern that we haven't had a new website like we were promised and we were hoping for in June 2021. Like that's example, where I don't know that we're going to have a new website by June 2021. Objectively, you're not going to hit that mark. But I'm frustrated that really basic things haven't been done. And I'm trying not to be unfair, but you know, objectively, there's some things that are really lacking. So my advice to you is to really look closely at those deliverables and see what more can be done. Um, and you know, I am concerned that the goals you set in November, we haven't really hit. And I don't have a lot of, of sensitivity to the timeline because we set them in the midst of the pandemic. You knew what you were up against. We knew what we were up against. And both I think you as an executive and to David's point, we as a district. I give our district like a, a, a D plus C minus, you know, like we're making it through, but I don't, I'm not loving where our district is. And it's one of the people who feels really responsible with the six of rest of us, like I don't think our district is nearly at the performance level that I know it's capable of. I know the students are, I know the teachers are. Somehow or another, we've got to move it forward. And that would be my sort of advice for the next couple of months here.
Thank you for your feedback, Anna. Appreciate it.
All right. Um, so we are now on to the next item. Um, we've allowed five minutes for this, which is to vote, um, to change so that we would have no school. Uh, I guess it's Monday, right?
So I think, I think Michelle, did Michelle, did you, Horgan, I'm sorry. I thought you wanted to talk after Anna, but I don't know.
No, that's fine. My, my comment.
Sorry, I didn't want to speak for you, but.
I yet to have time left for me, so we can move on. Um, so, uh, do you want to make a motion Dana?
Um, I'm not sure what you want me to make the motion on.
Do you amend the calendar?
Okay, I, okay. I'm, I'm uncomfortable that Peter has his hand up and is not.
If you guys would like to say that you want to spend more time on this, this is fine, but my takeaway was that we should put times on here and try and stick to it. So if you guys want to continue, someone make a motion and we'll continue.
I move we allow.
Make a point that I, there has yet been time for me to speak, so.
I, I think you should have time to speak too. I move that we extend continuation of this topic until every committee member is a chance to have a chance to speak.
Okay, Peter?
Are we voting right now?
Yes.
So yes.
Julia?
Yes.
So Horgan?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Shall Bailey? No. All right, um, Peter?
I'll just be very brief. Um, everyone knows that I'm promoting myself to citizen soon. And um, I, I hope the, the conversation as we move forward this summer includes the discussion of a learning management system. Because I think had a learning management system in place, the superintendent would have crushed goals two, three and four. Because improved, just, you know, a learning management system is a fantastic way to communicate with stakeholders. Every parent, every student, every guardian, uh, every teacher, every administrator would know exactly where every student was at at every point. Um, they would know where they are, what work is due, what their grades are. Um, so that's a fantastic communication tool. It would have horizontally and vertically aligned our curriculum. Ensured all students were learning the, the same thing across grades. It would have improved um, high quality instruction because um, it creates an individual IEP for every student based on their own unique combination of multiple intelligences. Uh, creates a snapshot of every student. So we know exactly where the learning gaps are. And I'm just, yeah, I would have liked to have seen a learning management system because I think it would have addressed in large part goals two, three and four. So thank you.
Michelle, Horgan?
My comments were addressed by Dana and Peter. I'm sorry Dana and David regarding communication. So I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. So I just want to go back and look at the item while I'm speaking. So I would um, like to say with regards to goal number three, that when those um, curriculum people, leaders were removed from the budget last year, it was meant to be temporary. Um, and that Mary Beth walked into the district with, in sort of a chaos time. So the fact that she did look at our personnel, um, the talents that we have and find a way to restore that leadership in our district um, should really be recognized as something that is um, important and has been done well. And I'd like to commend her for that. Um, I also agree that the communication has improved and has been um, very good. I feel that Mary Beth's willingness to have individual phone calls with school committee members um, helps us to understand the agenda items um, before each meeting. And that we have had um, really timely information um, sent from her. And I appreciate that she's been sending the weekly communications to parents and has been including the numbers um, related to COVID cases so that it's um, easy for people to access. And um, with regards to providing high quality instruction on the um, hybrid and remote learning environments, I would like to see just some more, um, what do you call that? More artifacts. That's the word I'm looking for, artifacts, um, related to what has been done. Because I know from being on the committee and from being a parent in the district that we have done quite a bit to improve hybrid and remote learning throughout the year. And um, that Mary Beth is not taking credit for that. And the last thing is that um, when Dr. Harvey came into the district, I, I was parent here and um, you know, he took the first year to kind of evaluate things. And then we had that big meeting at the library and we looked at facilities and developed a strategic, strategic plan out of that. So it's a, it's a long process. And I think that Mary Beth is right on target for the timing and that we are um, moving in the right direction on that. So I appreciate that. Anybody else want to speak to that? Julia?
Um, yes, I just, I don't really have anything substantive to add. Um, I would just want to echo what Dana said around the um, curriculum instruction and assessment. I would love to see more of that tying to, uh, I would love to see more with, you know, how it's actually tying to student improvement. Maybe how all the goals are, are kind of working together and tying together. I was not here when these goals were created, so I look forward to being a part of creating some new goals. Because personally to me, and I know this is in the past, like participating in a program, I'm not sure if that's a goal that I'm like very comfortable with for a superintendent, only because I'm not sure what that means and I don't really know how to evaluate it. And I, I, it's, it seems to me like, yeah, that's great. And it's very helpful. And clearly it's useful. But for me, the goals, I, I have some issues with the goals. The, the second thing that I did want to say is I do want to push back on this negative view of this family and community engagement person. I don't know if I'm the only person that really, I think there's so much potential here for this person. Um, and I, I just think it's how we, it's like, it's powerful and I think it's how we wield it. And I think if, I think that this, this person has this fantastic opportunity to truly be this linchpin in the community or at least reach out to more communities. I don't know. So maybe I'm just idealistic and wide-eyed, but um, I, I really think that that position has huge potential to improve. Um, goal number two, you know, to improve, to, to actually work on a few of these goals or to actually help communicate the purpose behind these goals. So I'm really hopeful and um, I, I do see improvement in several areas. But I mean, I know it's just a formative assessment, so we're not going to go too deep in the weeds, but I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I appreciate your feedback.
All right. So we, uh, moving on to voting on the calendar.
Sure. You, are you want me to start with a motion?
Yeah, that'd be easiest.
Uh, I move that we amend the 2020, 21 school calendar to have a, a new school day on April 12th.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second by Michelle Horgan. Um, so the purpose of this day is to allow families to plan to have this day off versus waiting until the night before and finding out that, you know, we have a significant numbers of people who um, are not going to be able to work on Monday and not be able to staff our buildings appropriately. So.
Michelle, if I could just quickly add that we have about a hundred and twenty people that are getting their second Moderna vaccination. And for other members of our community that have gotten the vaccination, we're running about fifty percent who have to take the next day off. So we can anticipate, we would probably have about sixty people out and we would not be able to run the district in that, under those circumstances.
Okay. So Dana, did you have a question about it?
Well, it's actually just a technicality and I'm
Okay.
sorry to bring it up, but if you, I, and I discovered it at about six fifty-eight this evening, that at the bottom of the exhibit, um, I don't know if anyone else has already noticed that it, there's a Scribner's error there that it says, um, it's correct on the calendar, but if you look at the very bottom of the exhibit in yellow, it says um, the date to include twelve seventeen twenty snow day and for eleven no school day, but the date is the twelfth, which is correctly reflected on the calendar. So I'm wondering if we can um, yeah, make sure that that's correct.
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you. Um, all right. So to give families notice, we're going to vote tonight on um, just this change in the calendar. Um, I'm not sure if David's there, so we'll start with Michelle.
Yes.
Peter?
Sorry, we weren't having any discussion?
Um, yeah, I was going straight to a vote.
Oh, my only question was, are we making that day up at the end of the year?
Dana said, and they, yeah, Dana said that in the motion. Yep.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, yes, thank you.
Okay, David, thank you for letting me know you were there.
Sorry, I'm just eating. Um, yes.
It's busy tonight. Julia?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Okay, and Michelle, yes. So there you go, kids. A snow day in April. Um, all right. So then our next item is, um, is Tom going to present this?
Yes.
It's going to be um, presented by Tom Keery. He has sent us a um, request regarding advertising banners at the uh, middle school.
Sure. Would, would you like me to share the memo on my screen? So
Sure.
we can see it? If you just have that capability. we can see it, if you just have that capability? One second. Alright, can you folks see the memo?
Yeah.
Excellent, excellent. Um so I'm coming before you tonight uh because I had a request from the Hamilton Winham Little League uh to hang advertising banners on the fence at the Miles River Middle School softball field. Um this came up in conversation with the Little League as, you know, they were sharing their plans to uh volunteer to cut back the the um overgrowth by the fence lines, um rehab the softball field. This is all done by the volunteers um through the Little League. So it did come up in conversation about being able to place banners for their season um as I listed in the memo. Um of course, this would not include any distasteful business or slogans um and no beer, liquor, or cannabis advertising. Um I have also informed um the contact for the Hamilton Winham Little League, you know, that if the school did object to any of the advertising, uh that we would hold the right to be able to take those down. Um I can add that the funds that the Little League does collect, they do find their way back to our students. Uh for example, I believe the Little League today was going to take a vote from their board um to purchase hats for the baseball team. Uh at the end of the year, they plan on giving the softball team a gift. And of course, you know, those funds just don't come out of anywhere, they um are raised through advertisers and other fundraising. Um I can't say enough about how good of a partner the Little League uh has been since I started here. Um because of the volunteer work at our baseball diamonds and our softball field, we were able to defer some of those district, what would have normally been district costs have been now handled by the volunteers, so uh because you have pop policy regarding advertising, policy D four zero zero three, uh behooves me to come to you for approval uh for this concept.
Right.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, can you make him a motion, please?
Um I can, um.
So you're gonna make it in the affirmative that we-
Yeah, no, I wanna make it in the affirmative and um I guess, do I need to ask? Well, I'm gonna make it and you guys can second it or not. Um so, okay, um so I move that the Hamilton Winham Regional School District accept the advertising um proposal as presented by Tom Gary for the 2021 spring season.
Second by Anna. Okay, so before we, uh Tom, can you stop sharing, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
So before we um start discussions, I just wanna give anybody who would like to recuse themselves the opportunity to do so.
Yeah, I I I think I might need to here, I I do sit on the Little League Board and I'm actually also the manager of uh the senior softball team, which actually directly uses um the field in question. I do just wanna add um though that this year um the the softball teams do use um the middle school fields and um the field over a cutler. And this year, the Little League has actually um voted that it's actually, the work's happening this Saturday, I believe, that we're actually tearing up all the infield and putting in new clay and uh re-leveling all the surfaces. Um and, you know, funds are a little tight this year, so there's actually bigger projects in the pipeline for actually replacing benches, um some fencing, dugouts, things of that nature. Um you know, so we would, there's really a big commitment to really upgrading the girls' uh facilities um on school's ground, so I I just, I, you know, in with that, I just wanted to sort of say that. I think I I think it probably makes sense for me to recuse myself from this vote.
Okay. Um so, I'm going to go first on this one. Um I spoke to legal counsel today and she wanted me to let you know that if you allow this, you are creating a limited public forum, which means if Little League is allowed to hang banners there, you must allow everyone to hang banners in the same manner. So, since we currently do not allow um our own football team to hang banners in this manner, we would be giving them a preferential treatment and we would need to change our practice for everyone. So as you're going forward and thinking about this, you will need to keep that in mind. So, Dana?
So this is a question and that was helpful. So this is a question is, the reason I made the motion the way that I did, which was to add specifically that for this season was my intent was that I have a lot of concerns about this, but I also see the value, and so my intent was to have it be a one season with the intent to then evaluate and ask ourselves, how did it go? And do we have concerns? Um so I I guess in light of what you just said, you know, is that how does that fit in with what? I don't know, that was my intent was that, cuz I do, I do think it's a bigger issue and also not necessarily one that I'm feel like we're really ready to, like, it's something I could see us taking on over a long period of time to really evaluate. I don't know.
Michelle?
So, as Michelle said, we don't allow our football boosters to hang their sponsors' uh signage throughout the season, they ti- put it up for a game and they take it down after the game. Um I think that's fair for if there's a Little League softball game um at the field um behind the middle school, I think that's correct, we can't we, in my opinion, we can't say it's okay for Little League to hang their softball banners and not our football boosters to hang up the banners throughout the season, we need to be consistent. That's it.
Anna?
Um, Tom, can you go back for me a step and explain? And maybe this is good context, explain what motivated Little League to ask for this request in the first place? And I guess I'm curious to know that we don't allow the football boosters to do that for something that, you know, sort of benefits the family. So I guess that's sort of a question for Tom and a little bit a question for Michelle Bailey about understanding where that prohibition has come from?
Sure, um I can first explain how the conversation came up. Um it was really a matter of having the time to do the prep on the diamonds before the games, right? So, they were um the, you know, the the rep conveyed to me that they have a finite time between the time school gets out and the time the game starts. And there is raking the diamonds, prepping them, laying the chalk down after school. Um and they were finding themselves tight on time um when it came to hanging and taking banners down. Um as far as the other sports, I'm gonna plead ignorance on this one because I did not it, the the question really hasn't come to me before. Um I just felt a duty to bring it to the school committee because it was asked of me and I did not have that decision-making authority since you have a policy on it.
I I I do have insight, just so.
But if you're recusing yourself, you can't participate in the discussion, so if you're not recruiting yourself, that's fine.
I'm recusing myself from the vote, I can have the discussion.
Recusal means you don't participate in the anything, but, so you can make that decision.
Um and then, yeah, can you um go back to the history about why why we haven't allowed that customarily for our own teams and boosters? I mean, I could, I I will just say, cuz I remember, I remember we looked at this policy for the filming, um the streaming that Craig brought to us before and I remember looking at it very carefully and thinking about it, so it is a little surprising to me that, I mean, I I totally understand, I wouldn't let some random company put up an ad at the football field and call it good, that makes sense, but for our own boosters, our own teams, for Little League, that as, you know, David, before he recused himself, you know, puts a lot into this, like, so I'm curious to know where that ban on the football boosters, for example, came from and what was the thinking there?
It comes from the policy and it comes from the fact that we cannot market to children in public schools and by having advertising on the facilities at their school, you are marketing to them. And in the and up until two years ago, we didn't even allow the banners from the football boosters, but they came a couple of years ago, was it? Was it the first, Tom, the first year you were here with Julie? I think-
I I don't recall being involved in the conversation, um could be wrong, so.
So.
Lots happened over the past years.
I know, it's hard to remember cuz I can't, I remember it was recent, but I don't remember if it was with Julie or maybe it was at the end of the time Mike was here with. So.
Peter's waiting to speak.
Oh, Peter.
Sorry, I thought Dana had her hand up first, um but I, but going back to Anna's question and and your answer, Michelle, it says the school committee may grant position, per- permission for advertising of commercial products or services in school buildings or on school property under guidelines or regulations it may approve. But then it goes on to say otherwise, no advertising, so we have it in our purview to allow this, right? So, so to me, I-
But according to Naomi, if you allow it for one group, you must allow it for everyone.
What what I was about to say is I don't mind setting this precedent um because I think it's, it benefits our students. So, I plan on voting yes for this.
Great. Dana?
So I just wanna ask a question about my own motion so that it can help me to know how to vote. Because if if we were to approve this motion, I do understand the concern from Naomi, but be, does the fact that I limited it to this season allow us to revisit it after this season?
I I don't know, I had a a two-minute conversation with her and what she said is if you allow them to do it, you have to allow anyone else who wants to to do it.
But we would need to vote on that, if, I mean, we always vote, like, in other words, we did allow, we did talk about, like, the the football boosters, it's not that they're hanging up Hamilton Winham Football banners, they're hanging up advertising banners, so.
And they're taking them down during the time that it's being used as a school building, yep.
I understand that.
Yep.
But i- if, if, if the, if any other school sport wanted to do that, wouldn't they still come to us and ask?
It's not even any other school sport, it's anyone.
I know, but what I'm saying is it would still be a process, they wouldn't just do it, they would come to us and ask, correct?
Yes, so we would not be able to deny it.
Well, we could ban it altogether.
I don't know, like-
Anyway, I I don't wanna go there.
I told you, I called her before the meeting to ask her about something else. She asked me why I was asking it, I told her what we were doing and she told me that that would be creating a limited public forum and you would have to allow everyone else. If we want a written opinion from her, we certainly can put this off and get one from her.
I mean, I-
Sorry, I didn't-
No, 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 I I mean, I, like I said, I I feel-
I'm not a lawyer, and then I I called her about something else and-
Nope, no, and 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 I think we should just, everybody talk once or whatever and then we should vote.
Anna?
Um, thanks, Michelle, I think my confusion might be similar to Peter's and the last thing went around this is that our policy explicitly does give us permission to do this on a case-by-case basis. So, while I understand what Naomi has said, it seems like her advice, granted quickly and not necessarily around this, it seems like her advice conflicts with our policy. So, that's interesting to me that she would say that in light of what the policy itself says. I also think that I like very much the way Dana worded this as um a moment to sort of stop and think about this and given the, you know, the contributions, but I don't I don't see the conflict because of what the policy says, I'm not as troubled by this because it's, you know, it's clearly giving us discretion to do it. And to some degree, I feel like we have this sort of case-by-case opportunity. I mean, if that's not right, then if what Naomi is saying is true, then our policy itself would seem to be out of compliance with the law, which is interesting that the MASC in all these years would have done that, so like, to me, I feel like there's a discrepancy there that I'd like to resolve, but I also feel like, to me, given what I understand, our current written policy to be gives us authority to do this. If Naomi's verbal opinion conflicts with that, that might be something to explore, but according to what we have in place and have had in place for years, I think we have the power to do this and I feel like, just in terms of precedent, we just did it with the the streaming thing and I think we have some discretion and I guess philosophically, like, I I do kind of feel like this helps the community and I have some confidence that the advertising will be tasteful and local and, you know, I I'm okay with it and I would like to maybe follow up about the policy itself, maybe ask Dorothy or Naomi together, but I don't see the conflict, given what the policy says. But I appreciate that Naomi disagrees, I hear you there.
Michelle? Did you speak already?
I did.
And then Julia?
I don't have anything, I don't have anything to add, that hasn't been said.
Peter?
Did you wanna speak again?
I I just want a clarification for something you said. If we allow our sports teams to do this, you said we're allowed, we have to allow anyone to do it? What does that mean, anyone, like?
That is what Naomi said, I I can get clarification from her if you would like, she said it creates a limited public forum and you must allow anyone to do it.
I don't know what that means, anyone, anyone associated with the school or anyone even not associated with the school?
I do not know, I'm happy to ask her-
That, it's just that word, anyone, was vague to me.
I'm happy to have her write us an opinion, but I I, like I said, I called her on something else, I mentioned this and she said, oh, if you do that, you're creating a limited public forum and if you do that, you must allow anyone to do it.
So a politician could put up a banner?
Everything has to be approved by the school committee.
Yeah, it just seemed that anyone is, that it was too vague and um like I said, I'm I'm okay with this, I'm okay with setting the precedent. I I don't see us allowing anyone but school-related business or sports ever hanging a sign.
To be clear, this is not a school team, this is a not-for-profit team in town.
Yeah, but it's our students, that's what I'm saying.
Not necessarily. Eddie, you don't have to be a Hamilton Winham student to play on a Hamilton Winham Little League, so.
You need to live at Hamilton Winham, we do. Okay, for Little League, you do.
Correct, but you do not have to attend the schools. Okay, are we ready to vote? Um, David, is, you're gonna recuse yourself, right? Okay, uh Michelle Horgan?
No.
Pe- uh Peter?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Michelle Bailey, no. Motion passes four to two. Um, next, uh we res- see, I received a request to sign a document allowing, uh, well, actually, Mary Beth as well, allowing us to have a co-op agreement with the Manchester Essex softball for sup- for girl softball. And um so I wanted to bring that here for a vote, basically, we have enough students of our own to field a um team, but not really a JV team and Manchester Essex doesn't have enough really to field the team, so if we all come together, then we can have two teams, um this is very common, we we do um some co-ops with others for hockey and things like that and, you know, Swin teams and things like that do it as well, so um I just need to have your approval in order to sign that. So if you wanna make a motion, Dana, and then we can discuss it.
I move that the Hamilton Winham Regional School Committee approve uh the request uh for a co-op, to create a cooperative agreement between Manchester Essex and Hamilton Winham Regional High School in the sport of softball for the 2020- in the sport of softball for the twenty 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 one spring season.
Second.
Second by Michelle. Michelle Horgan. Um, does anybody want to discuss this?
I just want to state if I'm sorry if I jumped in, just I think this is, I think another another great opportunity for us to give all kids in our community and beyond our community a chance to participate and make the best out of a horrible year for them. So.
Um, David?
I'm standing.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you. Um, Michelle?
Yes.
Di- Peter?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Uh, Dana?
Yes.
Michelle Bailey? Yes. Okay, um, Capital Finance Subcommittee and Tom Geary um, have a proposal for us uh, related to sort of yeah, athletic complex and, you know, how we sort of deal with and move that forward. So um, who's going to present that? Is it?
Tom, Tom, do you want me to do or you want to do it? It's your baby.
We can, we can co-op on this if you want. So let me, I can go ahead and.
I think we have to approve co-ops though, Tom.
All right, let me uh, see. I don't see. I'm sorry. I'm I'm doing a bad job of pulling this up. So I'm sorry, there it is.
I can just fill in while Tom's. Oh, there he is. Never mind. I'll stop talking.
Sorry about that. A lot of the exhibits were all smooshed together in uh, on the page. I'm having trouble clicking on it. Um, so as a result of our uh, meeting this past Monday, the Capital Finance Subcommittee. Um, this is a variation of the exhibit I provided to that Subcommittee. Um, basically trying to get uh, the wheels in motion on an athletic facility improvement project. Um, so presented to the Subcommittee, the need to set up a I guess a Subcommittee of the Subcommittee, which could be considered a steering committee. Um, that would involve the folks listed on this page. Uh, we would be looking for uh, the Athletic Director, Craig Janualdo, Sean Timmons, the uh, Hamilton Wenham Recreation Director, someone from High School Administration, which may be served by Craig in the same capacity, depending on bandwidth of our folks at the high school. Uh, Representative for the Turf uh, Fundraising Group. We'd be looking for a representatives from both the Hamilton and Wenham Community Preservation Committees. Representative for the Hamilton Wenham Regional High School Tennis uh, Staff. Representative from the Hamilton Wenham Youth Soccer League, the Little League uh, Youth Football and Youth Lacrosse, as we view everybody listed here as equal stakeholders in this project. Um, they'll ultimately um, you know, the the sports groups will be the end users um, at some point in their sports careers. So I would be looking for the school committee tonight to adopt this approach. And we, as the administration, can send out the invite letters uh, to everybody listed here so we can shoot to get something uh, going in the near future.
Yeah, I'm just going to jump in and say, um, those that weren't on the committee last year. Um, we were able to through the work of Stacy Metternich and Jean Lee um, create an MOU with the turf team. Um, but then COVID hit and our um, attentions were directed elsewhere. So this has been put on the back burner for a little bit, but now the budget season is over or not over it. Now that the budget is on the way to go to town meeting, we've decided to um, really move forward with this and um, really start to engage the community. And this is a great way to start with the steering committee. Um, and also the Subcommittee, um, we bantered around names back and forth and um, it was decided that I would, if as if I was recommended by the school committee, would be the representative from the school committee. So that's it. Anything else, Tom?
Or anyone else? Steering so that we can see each other. Thanks.
Sure thing. Uh, no, I don't think I have anything else to add. Um.
Okay, so Dana, can you make a motion that the school committee would create a steering committee and then we'll discuss it?
Or uh, is that the whole motion that just we're just creating it? Because I I want to make sure we're de- it's to delegate.
We would create it because eventually we would affirm the members.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I moved that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School District uh, create a steering committee for athletic facilities improvement.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
David? Um, let me just check the time here. Okay, um. I'm gonna go first. Um. Why are we including Hamilton Wenham Tennis and then all of the town nonprofit organizations, but not including the other teams that would use the facilities like Hamilton Wenham Soccer, Hamilton Wenham Football, Hamilton Wenham Baseball.
They were on there.
Softball. No, not the high school, the high school football team, the high school baseball team, the high school. Why are we only including the high school tennis team? Yeah, Michelle?
Look, I'm sorry, I have to.
I think I think Michelle and I might say the same thing. So Michelle, let's see if I get it right. We'll 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 co-op this together. Um, Michelle, the thought process there was that Craig is a representative of all the high school teams, that the high school principal is a representative of all the high school teams. So there are some things there. We discussed that with some very clear specificity around the tennis program and the number of students and their particular facilities needs. So that was sort of a particular point of emphasis. We talked about for a while, just that program being somewhat unique and what what their current challenges were and their sort of radial impact. So we felt like that was a particular point of emphasis because that particular facilities element was um, you know, has sort of slightly different needs from uh, from the 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 lawn sports crew, like the tennis sports have sort of different needs. So uh, that was the thought process there as I remember it, but Michelle Horgan.
Yeah, and also um, also too, that in the last go around, and I wasn't on it, but the tennis team program was neglected. Um, and a little bit like the stepchild, but you look at it, it is a community as well as a high school endeavor. Um, so it really does need to have its own um, representation.
Well, maybe we can get it to be on grass. It's like.
Wimbledon, yeah. We'll work on that.
All right, thank you. Peter?
Uh, yeah, thank you. I guess mine's a two part question. Is it appropriate to put anybody from the towns on here? Because this thi- this is indicative of the 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 death spiral that I've been talking about for three years. That we just do not have the money to even maintain level services. So we just keep cutting programs. We've cut language. And we don't have the money. Our 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 field is unusable. The tennis court's unusable. The track's unusable. Um, where do we expect to ever find the money to fix any of this with the town in a death spiral and having its revenue problems? Is it so? Is it appropriate to have invite somebody from the town on here or or private? Private groups who could donate? I mean, is that part of the turf funding fundraising group? Right? I just don't see how we're ever going to get the money in the budget because we can't even maintain level services without an override.
Um, so if you see um, um, Peter, we do have the um, turf fundraising group is on there. That's the private citizens that we've secured an MOU with. Um, in addition, we do have the CPC um, ch- uh, people on it from both Hamilton and Wenham. Um, and Miss Anna, we talked about the planning board is involved.
Well, I think Tom Gary clarified that we discussed, um, we discussed having the other town person that we noted who is on there is Sean from the Rec Department is technically a town employee for both people. So that, Peter, to your point, that was purposeful to kind of show that this project wouldn't won't get off the ground without buy-in from the towns and potentially looking at other sources of funding. So that was when Tom uh, first brought it to us, that those folks were not there. And so the Subcommittee purposely added. I think we added the CPC folks. We added tennis. And I think that might have been it. There was conversation about adding more people from the town, but it felt like that is getting to be a very large committee and the the buy-in was sort of there from those three townspeople. Um, but we talked about someone from the FinComs. We talked about Town Manager or Town Manager Delegate, but decided that the CPC and Sean were probably the most important town stakeholders to be there. But that was on purpose and that came out of Monday night's meeting.
Yeah, no, I agree. Athletic facilities improvement is is critical because um, I just don't know how we're going to do it without increasing revenues in our towns.
Yeah, one one thing I can add to, if it gives anybody comfort is having experience working on uh, public building committees throughout the years, there may be phases in the project where you bring in different stakeholders. For example, you know, the fire department to talk about access to the facility. Um, town managers to talk about different items that they may have. So there may be and this will, these will be open to any for anybody to attend, which I think is important to note as well. Um, we'll be noticing these meetings. And, you know, I think we are going to have to bring in all sorts of different stakeholders um, throughout the process. So.
David, do you want to speak?
Uh, yeah, I actually wanted um, thi- this conversation is sort of timed after the last conversation. I i- i- is pretty, pretty convenient. Um, when we changed the advertising policy four years ago, it was actually as a precursor for this discussion, and it's one of the reasons why it's written the way it is. Um, knowing that at some point we were going to have to change. And that's why I was like so that antsy last, I shouldn't have recused myself when I did. Um, so i- i- it's funny because that Little League vote actually is something that needed to happen, not necessarily for Little League, but at some point to um, begin the fundraising because we realized that there we're going to need a lot of community support, um, advertising, you know, possibility of naming rights, everything like that. Uh, and that's where that policy originated from. It probably does need to be updated now, but like it it was sort of that that foundation that we knew seeing this come down the pipeline. Um, you know, so so this is a, this is a great next step. So I I'm I'm all in favor. But yes, I do worry about making the board too big, right? Too many chefs.
Great. All right. So why don't we vote on this and then um, we'll anticipate having a list of names of who the exact reps are sometime in the future? So um, we had a motion to create the steering committee. Um, and a second, so we'll vote on that. Um, vote on the affirmative means we'll create the committee and then we'll populate it later. Julia?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes, get to work.
Anna?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Michelle Bailey? Yes.
Okay.
So you may be the lucky person to be on one of those committees if you're watching. Um, great. So we are going to um, sort of discuss tonight. Um, a definition of equity. Um, it's been a lot of discussion about that over the year. And we are trying to think about how equity um, impacts our particular um, district. And so we have had um, various groups, well, various individuals from our committee collect various different definitions from various groups. And so we wanted to go through a process where we sort of culled through those um, definitions and ideas and came up with like, what are the things that speak most to you so that we can build our own best definition? So um, we had the idea of a way to organize this so that we could accomplish it in a relatively short period of time. Um, to have each person share out, and I think it's three things that are seem to be the most important thing to include in equity. And then we would create a list that we think is important and then have a Google form that you would vote on what you think is the most important. And then we'll use that information at our next meeting to pull together our definition. Um, because you know, if we have twenty one or even fourteen different ideas, it'll get to be so cumbersome that it won't be as meaningful and impactful as some of these that we've seen that are pretty um, you know, relatively short within a couple of sentences. So um, does someone want to kind of explain what they think I said so that I can make sure that I said it right?
I have a, I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, so I I liked Anna's definition. I don't know, Anna, did you, is this something that exists somewhere or did you write this for us? As an example?
I wrote it for us based on having looked at all all kinds of different things.
I should have asked you before.
Yeah, no, that's okay. No, that's a, that's a custom seeds it right there of those fat, one, two, three, those five bullet points I wrote.
Okay.
For for this purpose, for this moment, based on um, looking at all the other sources and thinking a lot about it.
Okay, so I really, I like to me, I want to go from what already exists. So I'm not, I'm not, Michelle, I guess I'm not sure what you're asking us.
Perfect. This is what I'm trying to.
I kind of, I mean, I just, I would love to just go off something that exists. I sent some examples in because I didn't write anything myself because I didn't feel like I I could. So I can certainly express how I feel about certain bullet points, but um, I'm not sure what kind of feedback you want.
Yep. So the question is more or less, if you were starting from scratch, what three ideas would you want included? Because it may be if we went around and expressed our three ideas, we would all have the same three, but that's unlikely. But it's possible if we want to go around and all share our three ideas that we all might have one in common, in which case we'll know that has to be in our definition. But then figuring out which ones of the other ones could really belong in there, we could spend hours debating. Or we could, if we were in a room together, we would say, okay, put them up on the board. Okay, let's vote. Which ones do you think are appropriate? Or we put up post-it notes or we put up tick marks or whatever, just sort of narrow it down. Um, but because we're not all in the room, we can't do that. So the way to do that was maybe through collecting them and putting them in a Google form and voting. I'm sure we've all done something like that before. David, what did you want to say?
Um, that I I'm not sure we're not sure this is the right discussion to be having. I i- in, in, I appreciate the discussion. So uh, but what the discussion, I think we, where this need should be going is what we would like to see as a board in terms of improving diversity, right, and inclusion in our district, right? Because I'm a cisgender, white, heterosexual male, you know, with uh, from you know, um, uh, 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 upper middle class socioeconomic background. I could say I, you know, done a lot of work with in urban environments and I, you know, didn't come from the city when I was younger, but like, you know, I I it, I can't speak for, you know, um, to to the parties within our district that are feeling, you know, slighted. And and I want to make sure that I hear their voice to make sure there it's all included. I think rather than us coming up with that definition is, is really coming up with what our goal is. Right? And and sort of some steps we should be taking to accomplish that goal, right? And that this is where that idea of sort of, you know, um, you you know, coming up with the with the with the proper surveys and in in the proper process of of having voices heard. Um, you know, and I I think that's what our goal should be, right? As opposed to sort of as a definition, what our group of you know, not overly diverse school board members, you know, um, via, you know, what we view and think equity inclusion is because I actually think that's um, you know, I I don't think that would be the most helpful thing to do. I guess the the best way to put it.
Peter? Peter?
No, I I agree with David. Um, their their account. Their, their countless hundreds of doctoral dissertations out there, people smarter than myself, who can define what diversity and equity and inclusion is. And I just, yeah, I agree with David. I don't think we should, it's our place to define it. I think that it's already been defined by people a lot smarter than myself. I'd rather just focus on what is our goal in our district.
I, I also think it's fluid, right? Because it's our community and, and our community is constantly changing, right? So what we, we have to sort of see what's going on with it, with our community, especially in regards to the schools, right? So that's what we're talking about in regards to schools. How are students feeling, right, in, in regards to representation? In, in what we're teaching them in our curriculum, right? And, and, in, um, treatment of, um, by teachers and by coaches and by administrators. And just because we come up with this sort of roadmap this year with this particular people, doesn't mean that the needs of the district are going to change, right? And, and I think it's about, we get, and, and again, I love this discussion, right? Because we're having it and I think this is the important first step. I- i- is realizing how important this sort of fluidity is, right? And then realizing, okay, so as a school board, what can we do to help facilitate this? Right? To set up the guidelines and to really sort of help bring this into, you know, in, into our schools and into everyday practice, right? And, and then be able, and then be able to adapt as it, as it changes, as the needs change.
Michelle?
So David, I'm gonna, um, put you, uh, in the spotlight because you said that your district, where you're currently teaching, is rolling out this initiative. So I would love to know the genesis in your school. You know, how, how did it, not even so much how it started, but like, what were the steps? You know, so it's not rocket science. We know how to be kind, but there are, there are steps that we have to take engaging the community, engaging people and engaging students. So I, I, when I went to MASC to ask them to help us with this, they were at a loss. They're talking about people that are in their mid-fifties and older. You know, and it's, it's just not commonplace for them. And, and they're evolving as we all are, and some of us are more evolved than others because of age and, and where you live. But I think if you could shed some light, and I don't know if today's the right time, or if it's our workshop on the twenty-eighth.
Right, yeah, I mean, whatever the chair thinks, cause I have some thoughts. Obviously, I wasn't, I, I, and I will preface it, but just saying that like.
The chair thinks she's waiting for you to call her back about that question.
Alright. But yes, I'm happy to talk about it.
So, yeah, Mary Beth and then Dana.
Uh, I just want to offer to the committee, when we had the, the workshop related to diversity, equity and inclusion, one of the things the committee had decided at the time, and it made, it choose to choose, change its mind. But the month of April was going to be dedicated to defining a, a working definition for the school committee about what equity is. And in May, the plan was to develop a, a goal associated with that. Just, that was the outcome of the workshop. Again, you may decide to take a different path, but I just wanted to remind folks of that.
Yeah, so, um, Dana, did you have something?
Yeah. Yeah, I, um, so I actually am like, I feel really excited by this conversation. And I wanna reframe a little bit, David, what you said, cause I wrote down what you said. Because Michelle said, oh, I want everybody to come up with, you know, three areas that are really important. And what I, when I heard you talking, what I heard you say, David, is I wanna make sure every single voice is heard. And I wanna make sure that we all understand that this situation, that this definition is gonna be fluid. And, um, to me, those, that's, that's the, those are the, those are your answers, right? That like, part of what you wanna do here is make sure that those things. And so like, even though I actually really want to create this statement of equity, and I know you're saying you're hesitant about it, I actually think we're really seeing eye to eye about the importance of having the conversation. And I get, like, I'm excited that, like, I think that the things that you said are critical and important. And they're also not exactly what I wrote down, and that's really cool. Like, so I'm energized by that. Um, and then I just wanted, and I actually could answer your question if you wanted, Michelle, but my, but I also wanted to just say to Peter, like, you're so right that there's already a million definitions out there. And yet, I think there's so much value, even though you're totally right that they're all out there. There's so much value in us trying to walk through it and do it ourselves, even though in the end, it might look really like that same definition. I just think it's really, there's a lot of value. And I, and I don't wanna talk too long, but I'm really, I, I do do this kind of a vision statement with individuals. And I shared this with somebody, I think Anna maybe. Like, oftentimes, parents' vision statements end up sounding all very similar. But they all get there in different ways, and it's really important to do that work, so, and now I'll.
Yeah, and it's also when you, when you have to write something yourself and you whine and you complain and you hate it and it's painful, it's because what you're doing is really understanding it. So as we are coming through that process together and having a shared idea, we'll all understand it better, I think. Yeah, Anna?
Thanks, Michelle. Um, and I don't know if it'd be okay for me to share my screen, but while we've been talking, I pulled up some of those other districts that have done this work already. Cause the statement that I wrote, um, that, you know, um, Julia was asking about the preface to it, if you remember, was that I looked at sector alignment. So, you know, D E I thinking is all the rage in every sector. So I think what's applicable in the manufacturing industry or the aerospace industry, or even the for-profit sector doesn't apply. So I put, took my cues from looking at what are other districts that are doing this well? Because to Peter's point and David's point, and you know, there is, there is a textbook definition of equity. Like, I think the idea of us trying to reinvent the definition of equity is, to some degree, a little bit, um, not necessary. But I think Dana's right, that what we need to do as a district is to show and internalize, why do we need to do this? What does it mean to us? What does it look like here in our district? What are the value propositions that underlie it? What are the pitfalls that we recognize as a predominantly white cisgender heteronormative community? Like, we need to be aware of those biases. So that was the place that I was starting from. Because I think if you look at what other districts are doing really well, that, there's, there's a commonality of those things. So in those like six or seven examples I gave, which I, I can share on my screen if the public or other people are, we can bring them up, or you guys can Google them. But there's, they, they, they start similarly, and then they have programming and whatnot. So when we initially last talked about this, I kept making the suggestion that we really don't have to reinvent the wheel. And it's a little disheartening, um, Michelle, that MASC kind of said, sorry, can't help. Because clearly there are districts out there that have done this and have done it really successfully. And so if we're hitting a, a roadblock there, um, you know, one solution I have would be to, to reach out to some other people. And I have some ideas of people who could do this, there's a lot of consultants, but also districts nearby that have done this well. And get them as a starting point. But I think to some degree, if you look at the end game, and the, the district that I think is really knocking out of the park is Lexington. And looking at what they're doing, it's pretty clear where we want to go. And so it's just a matter of like, looking at what are their building blocks? And most of them start with sort of, um, similar to this five bullet point thing. You know, it's not exactly the same, but they have a statement of their values and their purpose, and what does it mean here and why they're doing it. And I do feel like, um, we need to have some buy-in on that and some group thinking on that, but I also think we don't have to overthink it. And, Michelle, the process you're describing with the Google forum and this, and then we vote on values, I mean, it's sort of, I, that sounds really kind of cumbersome and somewhat unnecessarily contentious. Like, this, this should really be a joyous process. And so for me, I, I didn't find anything painful about this at all. Like, I, I felt like the, the ideas flowed, because to me, it's, it's so clear where the path needs to be. And, um, so I, I think I'm approaching it from an opportunity. And if you look at our webpage on equity versus the Lexington webpage on equity, like, you know, it's clear where we need to go. So I would, I would say reach out to the districts that are modeling it well and ask for, you know, ask for some help. But I also think, this actually, I think we're making it much harder than it needs to be. I think the themes are pretty common and pretty straightforward. And I do think David's right, that some community buy-in would be really helpful here. And I also think hearing to some degree from those voices and students who feel like we have major problems, which we've tended to silence. You know, we've gotten a lot of feedback even this year from families who don't feel like they've had an equitable experience. And I think unpacking that a little and saying what's going on in our district that's creating this feeling will help us also define the goal. So, um, you know, I tried to follow instructions and write up something, write up something that sort of made sense to me. And to some degree, I felt like maybe if we take a pause and, you know, reflect internally on that and look, cause I actually think that we might actually already agree, because there's already so much common thinking on what equity really looks like, so.
Ask them for their portrait of a grad.
The way, the way to find out if there's commonality is for us to go through a process and share what we think is, is our definition. And we may find out that it's not as clear and as common as one person thinks, cause we have seven different people.
So I've sort of offered out my first take on round one, so, um, you know, and why.
So can you state what you think are the three most important topics to be put in?
Well, I came up with five. I don't, I think three is an arbitrary number. So, I mean, I think that's one of the exhibits is in there is, I, I can read what I wrote, if you'd want me to do that. I mean, I guess they're.
That is fine.
Okay. Um, so, again, this is what I, this is what I wrote. Hamilton, one, a regional school district commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion. One, although I didn't number them, cause that implies a hierarchy that's non-existent. We will provide every student the individual attention and support they need to maximize academic potential, fuel intellectual curiosity and develop the self-confidence to inspire a lifetime of learning. We recognize and affirm that social, economic, cultural ratio, neuro, racial, neuro positive and emotional factors directly affect student opportunity, achievement and success. We honor and value the unique needs, backgrounds and contributions of every student in our district. We actively reject bias, discrimination and inequality in all forms, individual, systemic, historical and contemporary. We work to create a district culture that celebrates diversity, prioritizes fairness and amplifies freedom of expression that is affirmatively inclusive. We have a shared responsibility to seek diversity, equity and inclusion in all aspects of our district. And we hold each other accountable for our words, actions and silent complicity in the face of injustice. And we recognize that equity of student experiences requires collaboration, thought partnership and embracing perspectives that differ from our own. Our success as a district is not a finite goal, but rather an ongoing process of discovery, self-reflection, improvement and commitment to the greater good for our entire community. So if you decide, you know, pull that all apart, you could probably come up with, I don't know, twelve different core values. I don't think I could boil it down to three, but kind of like Dana said, like, that was my starting point. So, I'm, you know, I, I've, I've spoken a lot, I've provided some examples. I'm not quite sure how to move forward from here. Maybe the next step is for everyone to also write something similar or think of. I mean, that to me feels like the next step is like, we all write up what it seems to be and we compare. And then, kind of like, we would do a policy subcommittee, to be honest. Like, we look at like, the policies and say, okay, these four bullets are about the same. I really like the way Julia wrote that, I really like this, I wrote that. And then maybe we put it up, um, and actually, this might be a great topic for a public forum and actually have some feedback from the public specifically on this exact moment. Like, those would be my recommendations, but so that, that's where I would go from here.
Dave, I, I'm gonna say one thing and then I'm, and I'm asking David a question, then we'll have Dana and Julia speak. David, what Anna just said is what I thought I heard you say, which is that we really, the seven of us shouldn't be defining this alone, that we should have some sort of a public forum and discussion. Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, I mean, I, like, I, I, you know, when I read Anna's, you know, five bullet points, I, I thought they were fantastic. I thought they were really well thought out, and I thought they were very thorough, you know? But what worries me and, um, is the seven of, you know, I know it is our job to sort of do, do this guidance, but the seven of us making this decision is for everyone. That's not to say that we can't use this as a blueprint and go off of, because I really do think it is wonderful. And as far as like I could see, you know, it's pretty all encompassing. But I mean, I think it's something like this is just this, you know, it, it, like, like Dana said, it's this wonderful, exciting opportunity to really be hearing, and, and, and I know Anna feels the same way, and, you know, and I see everyone nodding their heads. This, this, this opportunity to really be listening to the students and even the teachers, right? Like, in, in, because it's, it's everybody in our community. And, and I wanna make sure that, you know, as we're having this conversation, sure, I, you know, I'm all in for us guiding it, right? And however, that, whatever that looks like, um, you know, but I just wanna make sure that nobody feels like where we're working. I guess, is, is, you know, and, and, and that's all where I'm coming from. Like I said, I, I think that Anna really laid out a beautiful blueprint here. You know, and just sort of how we take that to the next level, cause I, I really do think you're, you're gonna get, you, 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 you know, I, I, I at least I, I can really see us hearing from voices that aren't often heard in our community. And really feeling like they have a, a, a safe place to, to actually represent themselves. And, and, and that's, that's, I think, they are ultimate goal, right? So.
I forgot which order I said it was going in, Dana or Julia, but if one of you remembers, then just, great, we'll go.
Talk, Dana?
I was like, we can go alphabetically, we can go by whatever you want. Proximity to the center. Looks like you, Julia, you're on.
Talk, okay. So I agree, I think, Anna, we are way over complicating this. Also, I was, um, I was not clear as to exactly what we were discussing. But, I mean, there, there is a definition of equity. So like, we're not defining equity, um, per se. What we're doing in, in my mind, and because equity and like what I wrote down is, you know, equality means treating every student the same. Equity means making sure every student has the support they need to be successful. And then where we come in, equity in education requires putting systems in place to ensure that every child has an equal chance for success. So I think the definition of equity, like, like Peter said, like, you know, we've said, there, there's a definition there, but it's how we interpret it, I guess. And where we, you know, what we decide to prioritize and what are our three things we wanna prioritize? You know, is it, um, provide every student individual attention, you know, recognize and affirm these factors? Is it actively reject bias? I mean, all of the things that Anna wrote. So to me, I think, um, I, I love the idea of a public forum, but I think the definition of equity is kind of already out there. But it's how we interpret it for our district and how we commit to it and the systems that we put in place, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. And Dana?
So I, I agree with what Julie just said, and I guess what, and I, what I see in that is, to me, we need to do some work and present something for feedback from the public. So I don't, I think that both things are true, that we need to get feedback. But I also don't think we can just put it out there and say, hey, I think we need to do, and I think we're doing it. And I, I know, um, so I interpreted, Anna, it seems like only Anna and I actually like, wrote a definition of equity, and we interpreted it so differently, right? Like, mine is only, you know, this long. And interestingly enough, I actually went through the similar process to both Anna and Julia, but I didn't put all the, like, in other words, I Googled around and I looked at all these different websites and I read other school districts. That's what I did in order to create this, like, I didn't show my work, I guess, like, I just, um. So I think to me, I love everything that is all the pieces of Anna's. And stylistically, I would love to be able to present something that's a little more concise. And that, I think we're, we don't need to resolve that right now. But what I imagine is that it would be great to be able to present something and say, hey, these are, this is a draft. And we're gonna have like a community, I don't know what you call it, a public comment or whatever, where people could comment on our draft. Um, but I don't think it's fair to just open it up to say like, hey, everybody, what are your thoughts? Cause I think that's just too unwieldy.
So, um, it's called World Cafe. Are you familiar with that term, Mary Beth, World Cafe?
No.
So when, um, we did the housing, um, affordable housing plan in Wyndham, we had situations where there were. So when, um, we did the housing, um, affordable housing plan in Wyndham, we had situations where there were six tables, I think it was, and there was a table leader. And you would sit down at your table and you would talk about whatever one topic was. And then you would gather information from that. And then you would move to another table, but you didn't move with your same group. You got to pick the table you wanted to go to and talk about that little thing. And if you wanted to come back to a second table with a different group later on, you certainly could. And then afterwards, the table leader stood up, spoke what they had heard as a summary, got the room to agree that that's what they heard. And then from there created sort of like what the community wanted, ideas. So, but in order to do that, we had to start with creating what are the questions we wanted to ask as the table leaders? So I think that's what you're, um, saying Dana is like, we can't just sit, have a forum and say, hey, what's equity? We have to say things like how, you know, can you explain to us how equity would look? Can you explain to us a time when you feel like equity might not have happened? Or can you explain how, you know, um, being included feels for your family, your child, you as an adult? Um, or are you saying we should have like a straw man definition that people respond to? That's what I'm not sure about. Like what are people thinking we need to do from here? Do we need to create a straw man or do we need to create like topics to get feedback on?
Do we all, should we all write out, should we write out, um, maybe our, our definitions? I don't know. I, I really like what Dana wrote. I think it was, it was very succinct. Maybe we could each write two sentences and see if they're all wildly, wildly, um, opposed to each other. Because I, I love what Anna wrote, but it's implementation, which I believe is the next step for us is like, then this is what we commit to do, which I'm fully prepared to commit. But I think it's, it might be, it might be a step too far for, for this, for us as a committee. I don't know.
Like setting, setting, setting it up like a goal.
Yeah, so, yeah. Michelle, did you want to say something?
Well, just to, to follow up on what Julie said also that we need to, like we said earlier, we need to hear the voice of the community members, not just our, the seven of our voices in that. So, so somewhere between what we have now and what Anna has written, you know, we've got to get somewhere in the middle.
Yep, Anna and then Peter.
Um, thanks, Michelle. I, I think, um, I definitely think the community, both for practical reasons, but also philosophical reasons. Like we are the leaders of the school district, so I do feel like we can't, we can't obviate ourselves in that responsibility. But I do feel like as practical matter, this has to be an iterative process. I'll just, um, encourage people, if you're looking at that Lexington page, if you go down a little bit further, there's a button. Part of the reason I suggested that one is there's a box that says, where do I start? Whether you're a staff member or a community member just beginning your journey in understanding equity or a lifelong learner, click here if you're wondering where to start. I think for me, and now especially listening to the rest of the fellow committee talk about this, like, I feel like, um, we're not all on the same page with each other about what we think we're talking about. I think that's clear. So I feel like, I think I would pause on this for a moment and everyone kind of try to like put it into their own words and compare in some ways. Like I do think that would be a thoughtful thing and then we can come back together. And maybe not in a, a, a meeting, because I'm, I, you know, I know that we have a lot to talk about. Like this to me feels like a great workshop conversation again, to come back around with everyone having done similar amounts of work and then try to come up with something a little bit cohesive or maybe a couple of versions of it. And then share that with the community and get their process. But I think we need to start with something to say, this is where we've landed after the seven of us doing our best homework. Like we all have to go do our homework, bring it together, come up with something that seems like a good fit and, um, and then elicit feedback, you know, and do that. And I do think again, if you just look at, at what other districts who have done this process before, all of their homepages start with some sort of high level statement of principles, like what does this mean? And then as you distill it down, there's, here's this session on this, here's for other reading, here's what this great teacher did on this. Like then they have all these examples, that implementation, but all of the start of it stops. And, and it's basically like, what is our district's mission statement around equity? That's really what we're doing is a mission vision project around equity in our district. So that's a hard process, but I think it always starts with everyone internalizing it, putting it into words, coming together, coalescing into a document. But I think everyone knows, and Dana, it's really funny to hear you talk about it, brevity, not my strong suit, and I always over-document. So I'm perfectly on brand, but I have five bullet points, not three, and I have seven examples to substantiate my work. Like that's Cetix style for you, so. Yeah, I think we, we separate, do our work, come back together in a workshop, and then we have a public forum to really hear what other people think. And then we, then we take it from there.
When, uh, Michelle and I met with Mary Beth on Monday and we were talking about the workshop on the twenty eighth, which I want us to really get into, really hands-on, working on doing the evaluation. We also feel like that might only take an hour and fifteen to an hour and a half. And so we felt like, well, there's another bit of time there. And I had asked David if he would, you know, sort of talk about his experience of going through this. Um, but I think that would also be a good time if we all brought our definitions. We can talk about that and then make a decision about how to move forward as far as like, do we want our workshop, which I don't have the date on the top of my head, but it's in June, to be, um, one where we invite the public to speak to us? Do we want to try and fit that in in May instead? Um, and then be able to do more work in June or like what would do we want to do? So do people feel like they could commit to reading and writing? Some, and this includes Peter, because you don't get off the hook, because you're not, you didn't graduate yet, of writing a statement by the, um, April twen- twenty eighth meeting. So we would really want it sort of like probably the Friday of break, maybe? Do people feel like they can commit to that? Oh, Dana's like, yeah, I already have my homework done. I'm all set.
I know, I kind of feel.
Okay, so let's do that. Let's, let's have everybody, and, and if you want to write five sentences, you can write five sentences because we will help you edit it down. And if you want to write two words, we will help you elaborate and that's fine. Okay, so that's.
Can I just copy and paste Dana's?
Yes, however, that you will have to cite it because otherwise I'm gonna report you to floor plagiarism.
Fine.
I'm going to the Boys and Girls Club. I really liked theirs and I'm gonna model that. Okay, um, all right, the next one is, um, oh, did you still need to say something, Peter? Sorry.
Yeah, sorry. I just, um, I wanted to emphasize two things that, uh, Julia said. One, that I really like Dana's definition and as, as definition. And I really like Anna's as a implementation mission statement. And I also would highly, I would really encourage this committee and this community to recognize that a learning, a proper learning management system helps promote equity because it identifies learning gaps.
The funny thing, Peter, is that actually when, um, I really think that's one of the things that flagged my district. And I was gonna talk about it on the twenty eighth.
Say that again. Sorry, I missed that.
I, I think that part of the, um, reason, while we were diving into the discussion a little bit deeper is, is noticing trends and patterns coming up from the LMS about, um, equity issue, potential equity issues.
Yeah, if we want to be a data-driven district, we need to have data and then LMS provides that, provides a baseball card snapshot for every student. So every, we know where everyone's at at any moment. It would help promote equity.
Well, it's also with the, the woman, and I'm sorry, I can't remember her name, that spoke.
Dr. Wornham.
Yes, that, um, you know, if you want to know what's going on in your district, get your data, so, you know.
Yeah, if we want to be a data-driven district, we need data. And then LMS would do that.
Okay, so we are going to talk about town meeting communications. And, um, so there is a town meeting coming up. Um, and last year, we had a, a big message to communicate because we had a big ask. And David created, um, a one-page sheet for us, which was great. And it's lived on, its graphics have lived on, it's been used and, and reused. Um, and so we wanted to ask the committee if they felt like this year, we needed to have something, um, similar to sort of tell our story, um, particularly given that, um, it's been kind of a tough year. So do you want to talk about it, Michelle?
Yeah, just in our subcommittee meeting on Monday, um, we tapped into Mr. Leone um, to ask what the top things that we needed to discuss and, and, um, convey at town meeting. And the top three things were that this budget is the lowest increase, the second lowest increase in the past ten years. Um, that was huge. Um, the second one is that, um, this budget reinstates a majority of the programs that were cut during our COVID crisis, um, last June. And lastly, that we are funding OPEP, which is huge. So we agreed as a subcommittee that those were key, uh, key topics. So thank you, Benny, for your guidance, as always. So.
So the question that is twofold, one, does somebody want to make a sheet? I'm looking like, you can't tell. And two.
Don't be good at something. Don't be good at something or they'll always ask you to do it.
Happy to do it. Happy to do it.
And if so, then, um, you know, are those the points that we want to emphasize? And take the recommendation of the finance working group, so, um. Do people feel that we need a one sheet, um, to have at the town meeting to sort of explain things? I personally do, but that's me.
I think it, it can't hurt. That's all I would say.
Okay. Um, and we seem to have potentially a cheap graphics person who would help us with that. Okay.
They really keep selling me a far too cheap.
Um, okay, so if we could task you with that, David, to maybe, next week is kind of too soon.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I couldn't probably touch it until next week, to be honest, because it's the end of the, end of the quarter this week.
Yeah, so maybe, um, we can just approve it at the workshop, because really it's just communication of a sheet. Yeah, so if you can just have it ready for us, or, or we could throw it off to a committee and you could give it to the committee to approve or something.
If you can just, uh, if someone from that, uh, committee can just forward me those notes to, to work off of.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all that is. Great. Um, thank you, David. And, um, policy doesn't have anything written here, but I think you guys are coming with some policies next week.
I just wanted, I wanted to clarify, I sent you guys an email, but I didn't hear back. We have a bunch of things queued up that were gonna be from a while ago and then we pushed them off. So we're prepared to present on the fourteenth, like what, Mary Beth, three or four, maybe four or five things now?
I like it.
Yeah, I'll have to count them up, but yeah, there, there are a number of things. Given the length of this agenda, we decided to push things off to the fourteenth, but it'll be a really hefty lift on the fourteenth.
I think it's four things and I think that all potentially could, uh, could be voted on, but you might not want to. So I think, uh, you know, talk to Janelle about whether or not you want to put discussion and vote or just first reading. I know one of them's a third reading, so that one should be pretty straightforward, but, um, you know, that's where they are. So those are ready for the fourteenth, if you want me to have everything all done.
We're good. Yep, we, we put those on hoping, especially, you know, some of them are getting, smelling like dead fish. They need to be done and voted on, so that'll be good. Okay, uh, then it's me. Um, I've got three things, well, actually maybe four things. Uh, first thing is that I signed the MOU that we had previously voted on today and it is uploaded on the website in case people need to refer to it. The next thing is tomorrow is Wyndham special election, so if you are in Wyndham, I please vote. I forwarded you a letter that we've received from the Hamilton Board of Selectmen, which we will discuss at our next meeting. It's related to, uh, the town hall project and whether or not we would want to make a statement or support that. And then the last thing is, um, our next meeting, as it turns out, um, as Bueker returned to school, they moved out of the cafeteria. So the Bueker cafeteria, multipurpose room, whatever you want to call it, is available for us to use. Um, so we would like to return to having in-person meetings. And we'll work out all the logistics that go with that, um, because we feel like our, if our schools are safe for our kids and our staff, they should be safe for us to meet as well. Um, and I, by then, I know because of various people's jobs and their opportunities, most of us are gonna be vaccinated within the next month or so, so, um, that will also be a plus for us. If you're feeling uncomfortable meeting in person, please, 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 please let me know and we will make arrangements for how that will work for you. And, um, yeah, so, Anna.
So with those shifts back to in-person, I know it's gonna be on HW Cam, but I think we have really learned that Zoom is a huge benefit to the public and the public loves to be able to tune in and do that. And it's just not as easy for people incapable. Logistically, can we work out a way so there's still a Zoom link option for parents who want to, to listen that way? Or for school committee members who need to, for some reason or another, attend that way? Is there a way that we can do both? Because I know a lot of committees have been doing that.
I, yeah, we can try it. I mean, it's sort of like that question about live streaming and stuff like that. You know, if we have a Zoom link, like, what's that gonna look like on the other end? Um, because what are we gonna run it off of and how will the audio work? Because we're not all gonna be sitting around in front of a computer like this, collecting the audio. So, yeah, I mean, there's gonna be some kinks to work out, so we will work, we'll, we'll work through that. But I'm not exactly sure how it's gonna work. And just so people know, like, HW Cam is on YouTube, so instead of clicking on the link for Zoom, you could just click on the link for YouTube and see the exact same thing, so.
I think it's more the, I think it's more the public comment part of it, that right now people can make a public comment from home and then go about their business and do other things. Whereas if you have to make, if you have to attend in person to make public comment, that might be a barrier for people to participate. That's, that would be my biggest concern.
But maybe we could do the Zoom part for public comment and then do, people can switch over to HW Cam if they wanna watch. Yeah, because, okay, yep, we will, I will talk with, um, Bill Melville again. I confirmed with him today that we would be meeting and then he would be able to tape it. So I'll talk to him again and see what his advice is on that. Okay, great. Uh, Mary Beth, I am, you wanted to give us some good news and maybe some not so goodness.
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things for the committee and the community. So first of all, uh, happy to report on Monday, we had our full, uh, return to full in-person learning. Um, some very celebratory feeling, there was a lot of celebratory feelings at our schools. Um, our principals, excuse me, have reported that kids were excited to be back. Um, a lot of connections with kids that, oh, I haven't seen that friend in a year. Um, so there was a, a lot of positive energy in our buildings. Um, another bit of positive news is that the traffic issues that we had some level of concern about have not been, um, as challenging as we had expected. Um, there are, there are, not that's not to say that they were non-existent, but they were, they were much less than we thought may be possible. And our, our building folks are working out systems to address the, the issues that we do have there. Um, so overall, some really positive news in terms of the opening. Um, one of the things that did happen yesterday, uh, and I'm, at the high school level, we had three students that were identified as positive cases. Um, these were cases that the, the, they were identified outside of the school environment. Um, but what we did find in our buildings because of the, uh, three feet social distancing, and we knew that this was an exposure that we would have, that we had a, a fair number of close contacts at the, the high school. The latest count I have is twenty-seven close contacts. Because when you have a student that's positive and if they're sitting next to someone within three feet, that individual automatically will become a close contact. So that, that is a risk that we know is there, um, and did occur at the high school, um, yesterday. Um, on a, uh, on an, again, a more positive note, we had ninety-one pools that went in for testing, um, on Monday and Tuesday, and every single one of them came back negative. Um, we had that information today. Um, we had that information today. So, one, it helps, I think, the community know how important that pool testing is so that we know what level of exposure we have in our buildings. Another shout out and continued um advocacy for families to sign up for pool testing if you haven't already done that. Um, but it helps us to see that clear data that the idea of spread in our schools, we, we, we are seeing that it's not in our schools um in i- through this pool testing data. So wanted to share that concern that's come up, but also some reassurance that as the pool testing data has come in um from the past two days, we have had zero positive pools. Um, so what it, that is one piece of information. The other piece of information that I have for you is related to pool testing funding. Um, in between this, this meeting and our last meeting, the Department of Education has announced that it will pick up the cost of pool testing through the end of this year. So that was great news and helps us in terms of our budget. So a couple of updates for the committee. And uh we'll keep you posted as, as we continue on with our return to full in-person.
All right, so now we have um does Capital Finance have any more they need to let us know about?
Nope, I think that's about it.
Policy, do you have anything else you need for us to know about?
Um, maybe just an advance warning for people who've been on the committee for a while. Uh, Dorothy made the recommendation, and we're gonna process it a bit at the subcommittee. But sometime soonish, we're gonna move, or we're gonna ask the full committee to approve all of the policies that have been approved in form in this giant batch. Because, as you said, I think, you know, there is a little bit of a fish element. Some of those things are been waiting, so at some point in the future, we're gonna try to do a bulk process to update the policy, because Dorothy said, you know, we're getting two plus years out on some of these, and they're just sitting there. So that won't be for the next meeting, but soonish, that will come up.
Yeah, that sounds good. Maybe, do you think maybe the fifth?
Maybe. We wanted to go back through and make sure uh we had them all right, because there was a whole section, the, the financial ones we s- were skipped over. And then there've been a few outliers, like religious observances, weapons that we've, uh, public comment, the Title IX one, there's been a few that are like cherry picked here and there that we approved immediately to take effect. So Dorothy was gonna go back through and make sure that we identified which ones had kind of already been done. So we're trying to get ourselves so everything is in the same state moving forward.
I was just thinking, we're gonna have the bulk minutes on the fifth too, so if we could bulk up, that would be good.
Okay, all right, super. And then negotiations.
We'll have an update next meeting. Do we have anything else we need to?
Yeah, I have to say, I, my homework would have been to check with you as the chair, Michelle, to see whether there were things that I really needed to tell the committee, even though I'm the chair of the negotiations. I look to Michelle for guidance um with her institutional wisdom about what we need to share. But yeah, basically, we're just continuing on and we will update.
Yeah.
Soon.
Yeah, and, yeah. Yeah, and we need to talk. Okay, great. Um, so I don't know. And we do have a meeting tomorrow.
We have a meeting tomorrow, so that is an update. We do have a meeting tomorrow, so.
Okay, great. So we've got a bunch of warrants, we've got some minutes. And um we have some donations in the consent agenda. I would wanted to see if anybody wanted to pull any of those. I don't know. Great, um.
I, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, I do want to pull the, to hold the donations.
Well, hold the donations. I was like, that's where people usually hold those. Okay, great, so.
Yeah, I couldn't mute fast enough.
Yeah, Dana, can you make a motion for us to approve A and B without discussion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda parts A and B as presented. Um, and no changes shall be made.
I'll second.
Second by Anna. Um, David?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Michelle Bailey, yes. So those are approved. Um Dana? Would you like to talk about C?
Um, I actually don't have a ton of knowledge about any of these, but I just think it's really important to thank um each one of these um organizations for their donations. And if other members have specific um knowledge, I would definitely welcome them to speak to that.
So the donations for the Whoopi Pi wagon, if you look that up, um Michelle, Mary Beth and I had the idea to have sort of a celebratory thing at the um vaccination day. Then that got a little derailed. And so then um we thought, well, you know, let's do something on the first day back, which would have been this past Monday. But there was some concerns about traffic and the like. So um a day when we weren't gonna have traffic and the like was last Thursday on the teacher work day. Um, and so in order to make that happen, because you can't get stuff for free, the friends groups were asked to donate. And then um it turned out we needed some more funds, but we weren't sure how much more funds. So um our new family and community engagement person had engaged the friends groups and had kind of mentioned to Michelle and I that they were coming up a little bit short, and so um we filled in the rest of the money with that. Um, but because we didn't know how much it was gonna be exactly, we didn't ask the rest of you um for that, but we, you know, obviously know that all of you shared the same sentiment about the teachers being back in school and wanting to show your appreciation. So we just want everyone to know that we made that happen on behalf of all of us, so. That's what I know about that.
Question, can people donate supplies without going through the school committee, or is it only cash that has to be?
Stuff is supposed to be accepted by us also. But it doesn't always happen, you know what I mean?
Okay.
Like, but like when the friends group donate stuff, like a color, color is really good about that. They usually come to us, because what you don't want is somebody donating twenty-year-old computers to us, right? And then it becomes a disposal problem. So that's kind of how that works.
Okay, noted.
But you know what I mean? Like, it doesn't always happen, but.
Well, thank you. I want to say thank you for making that happen, but yes, for the record, anytime that you guys are fronting money, I will happily contribute a portion of it, so don't ever hesitate to ask.
Yep, it was a last minute thing, like, whoops.
It was a whoopee.
It was a whoopee on the whoopee, so.
And just, and just a thank you to the Pacific Life Foundation and the Institution for Savings for their.
Absolutely. Institution for Savings is always generous all the time. All right, so um, do you want to make a motion for us to accept the donations?
Oh, yes, sorry. Uh, I move that we accept the donations from Pacific Life Foundation for a thousand dollars, Institution for Savings Bank for a thousand dollars, and the donations for the Whoopi Pi wagon for staff appreciation as listed on the agenda.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second by Anna. Um, David?
Yes.
So Horgan?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Michelle Bailey, yes, super. Um, topics for future meetings. Just want to check the time here. Yep, topics for future meetings. There's nothing new on the form. Um, Peter?
I'd just like to recognize that Benny is looking very spelt.
Hmm, I know. I, you almost don't recognize him, right?
Looking very trim and elegant. Thank you.
Uh, Anna?
Um, I have a clarifying question and then two things I'd like to bring to a vote to get on to the next agenda. So um, in the work plan that was discussed at the meeting on the seventeenth, we talked about having DEI goals discussion first round on the fifth, and then a vote on DEI goals for next year sometime later in May. Are those still things that we're planning to do?
Well, I think we're a teeny bit delayed because we're gonna, we're not gonna vote a definition um next week. We're gonna talk about it on the twenty-eighth, but we're still working towards that.
Okay, I just want to clarify for that. So um I'd like to move two things to a vote. Um, I sort of gave everyone a preview of this in email. So the first one is that I move we add discussion and presentation of indigenous land acknowledgement to the next school committee meeting on April fourteenth.
Or a second for that?
Second.
Second by Julia. Um, Dana?
So I, I just, uh, my question is, um, on the fourteenth, um, would this be you and a outlining for us what you're hoping to do? Or would this be the student presentation where we would be asked to vote at the end?
So my intention would be that the student presentation would be sort of the thing we lead with. And then I have additional sort of historical background that I've researched in talking to the Massachusetts tribe. My um intention of trying to have the presentation first is explicitly, not that we would vote that night, but it would be part of this broader discussion about DEI goals for the next year. And I feel like it would be too much to try to do the presentation and then vote immediately. I think that feels a little bit rushed. But I think that in order to have a thoughtful conversation about DEI goals, we need to have had the presentation. Um, which is, is the thing, that's that eight-slide PowerPoint that I emailed around. Um, we've presented it once at the Lenham Human Rights Commission. I think it's gonna be at the Hamilton Human Rights Commission. So we're trying to get it in front of all three governing bodies uh so that we can have a conversation. So my goal would be fifteen.
Anticipate asking for a vote that.
Not at, not at that night. I would like to, I would like to have it be part of our broader DEI discussion later. But I don't anticipate forcing a vote at that moment, right after you present, because I think people want time to process and digest. And I think it does need to be part of a broader conversation. Um, so that, for me, feels like the fairer way to do it. So I'm asking that we add the presentation to the fourteenth with the idea that it's part of a broader discussion that's gonna happen later.
I would ask that we not do it on the fourteenth, just we've already reviewed that, prepared the agenda for that. And it is quite packed. Um, but we looked at the work plan and actually the fifth of May would be one where we would probably have time to fit that in. So I would just ask that we do it on the fifth of May.
I, I appreciate that. I've been asking for this for literally months, and I proposed it fifteen to twenty minutes, so uh, my motion is that I'd like to have it for the next meeting, so we can at least get it started and not be deferred any further. There is also a student who's been holding time every time we're sort of hopeful. So I, you know, I respect what you're saying, Michelle, but I've brought it to a vote because I've tried to work through this process collaboratively, and it has yielded not success, so I'm trying to follow the new guidance uh from the MASC and just bring it to an up or down vote.
And I'm just letting you know, and we've already timed out the next meeting, we've already prepared the agenda. And that it's timed out at around, what was it, around three hours, Mary Beth, like, like, it was, it was long, so. However, the fifth is not that way. So um we did, because you had emailed us ahead of time, we did look at the pl- work plan to see where it would fit well, and the fifth is where it would fit well. So I guess I would move that we would vote that it would be on the fifth of May instead of on the fourteenth of April, so. Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
So, like I said, that's my, my, I, I've stated my reason. My reason is that the next meeting is already long, and it's already been prepared. Um, so.
Do we have two motions on the table now?
There's two motions.
Nope, there's a motion.
There's a motion and a amendment.
There's a motion and an amendment. So um, but because we knew about this, we did look at the calendar and our next meeting, which is a true meeting, is May fifth. So we it wasn't full, the next one is kind of full, and the next one is kind of full, and then there's one in June when that's open a little bit, so. Um, it does fit nicely into May fifth, so um, that's what I would say.
So, but the conversation, this broader DEI conversation, do you anticipate that will not be taking place on May fifth then? That will happen later? Because again, my entire point of getting the presentation in first was so that it would be in our vicinity of thought prior to the next step. So I just want to make sure we're not deferring it over and over. Again, we're approaching the point where we've talked about this agenda item almost as long as the presentation itself, ironically.
When is the new school committee sworn in?
Um, well, you have to wait till after the election, and then it's usually the Monday after is when everything's certified.
So when, I don't even know when the election is.
The same. May sixth.
May sixth. Oh, so um, so I'll be at the, both of these.
You'll be out though, yes. You will not have graduated yet, Peter.
I don't know, I, I might have a problem with my eyes. I might not see myself going to those meetings. I'll be there.
Just so folks know, the reorganization meeting is May nineteenth.
Um, so, I mean, I, I'd like to, I'd like the, the presentation to be on the fourteenth, especially if it's going to be brief. So how do we, how do we move?
I'd like it to be on the fourteenth as well, but I don't know.
Then we vote on the amendment.
Nope, then let's go on the amendment. Um, so if you vote yes on the amendment, then you're voting that we would have the presentation on May fifth. And if you vote no on the amendment, then we will go to a vote on whether or not to have it on the fourteenth. David?
Yes.
Um, Michelle?
Uh, yes.
Julia?
Now.
Peter?
So no on the four, uh, May, no on the amendment means I want April fourteenth.
Correct.
All right, so no.
No.
Dana?
Yes.
Michelle Bailey, uh, yes. Okay, so we'll have that on May fifth, it's scheduled. Um, and like I said, there's not so much there, and we.
Do we need to technically vote?
Yep, now we're gonna.
Whether we have.
We're gonna have a presentation at all on May fifth. Um, David?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Michelle Bailey, yes. And um
I have a second.
Try and schedule that first, just because it's a student and, you know, so, yep.
Okay. Uh, the second thing that I would like to propose adding, um I move that we add discussion of the logo revision and retirement to the May fifth meeting.
Second.
So, um David, do you want to start that?
Uh, yeah, um, you know, I, I, my case is my view on this is pretty clear. I do think that the district needs rebranding uh in the sport. Um, I, I, I do think that I'd like to see it sort of framed differently. Um, I, I, I think that this, the the logo needs to be, I'm a twonome's logo needs to be updated. Um, and you know, I, I, I think that we want to be, I don't know, I, I, I don't know how I would for this, because I while the, my end goal would still be the same, my sort of reasoning, framing and approach would be very different. Um you know, I, I, I just think that we, we, that the entire district on many, many levels needs updating and rebranding. Um, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of very good reasons why this logo needs to go. Um, excuse me, but um, I, I'm just, I'm a little worrisome about our approach on how to broach it. And, and you know, and maybe this is the conversation that needs to by getting this on the agenda, that that's where the conversation begins. Um, so.
Well, and David, if I can, if I can say, my motivation for making it is sort of similar to that. Like, I'm not saying again that this is gonna be a definitive decision when we talk about it, but I think we need to start talking about it, and I, I completely support your feeling that there's other issues behind it. Um, again, my motivation, when I first introduced it back, I don't know, maybe October, November, was built around gender equity and also to some degree branding, marketing, trademarking with other generals logos. Like, I have a lot of other issues with it. Um, and again, I want to be clear for the public who might watch this later. I am not proposing that we cease to be the generals. I am all in for the generals. I'm talking about the cartoon logo itself. So I want to be really clear, I'm not talking about the mascot, I'm talking about the logo, um, just for clarity of discussion.
Yeah, I, I, I could see the value, yeah. And, and just, Anna and I talk about this offline all the time as well, so. Yeah, I, I, I could see the value, yeah, and, and just Anna and I talk about this offline all the time as well, so it's not just a.
Dana?
Yeah, no, that, I was gonna have the same, I, 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 if, I wanna make, I, I'm hoping it would be an opening discussion and, and a time-limited one. Um, I think it's an, I, I think, I think I'm in agreement very much with what David said, that I think that wouldn't be very thoughtful about that this is a bigger picture than perhaps just that, like it, like it's a bigger picture, so it would be an opening discussion.
I would just share that I feel like it's premature, because I feel like we're gonna be going through a strategic plan, and I think through that strategic plan, some of the things that we could be looking at are branding, um, branding our district and um, even some of the visuals that possibly come out of the portrait of a graduate might be helpful for us. And so I just, I just feel like it's a little too soon, but I do agree with some of the things that um, David has sort of talked about a little bit. You know, I remember the people from Barney calling up when I was working and being like, your Barney's just a little bit too magenta. Barney is supposed to be more grape, and I was like, are you kidding me, people? Like, you know, it's, it is important to them that Barney was a particular color and looked a particular way, because that is the image that they wanted to portray, and our logo can portray our image, and we have many of them. David is wearing one, Tom Gary has another, there's other ones other places, the Twitter page has a different one, so just, um, but I just feel like it's premature that we really should focus on doing the portrait of a graduate and our strategic plan and making this part of that, so. Um, all right, so Michelle, both?
I just, I just like to add though, too, that I feel like we have other issues that we need to deal with, and that the mascot um, should not be front and center right now. Even, even for discussion, I feel it can be put off to after everything is done, the strategic, strategic plan and portrait of a graduate. Three other things to focus on.
All right, um, David?
Yes.
I should have said, if you vote yes, then we're gonna talk about it on the fifth. If you vote no, then we're not gonna talk about it on the fifth. Uh, Peter?
Yes.
Julia?
Sorry, I couldn't unmute, yes.
Um, Dana? Yes. Michelle?
No.
Anna?
Yes.
Michelle, no. So we will talk about that also on the fifth. Fifth is now getting very dizzy. Um, okay, so now we are moving on to the last item, which um, just to be clear about what we're doing, we're voting to go into executive session under purpose number seven. Um, which is to comply with another law or authority, which is the open meeting law, because what we are going to be doing is looking at executive session minutes. And we will be hopefully releasing those minutes um, in May, um, as a periodic review of those. So, just so the public knows what we're doing, that's what we are doing. Um, and that is why there is no minutes for you to read, because there would be no purpose to protect them if we allowed you to read them. All right, so I'm, I'm, well, I guess I don't have to, well, I'll do this anyways. I move that we go into executive session for purpose number seven, to comply with the open meeting law um, and not to return to open session. So that basically means this part of the meeting would be over. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second by David. Um, roll call vote to go into executive session. Um, Dana?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Julia?
I don't have the link, can someone send it to me? And yes.
I think it's gonna be.
Is it any?
Link, right? We're just gonna kick everybody else out?
Yeah, I think.
Oh, we're staying on?
Yeah, we'll stay here, we'll uh, we'll, we'll shut down the recording, have Bill leave, and we'll ask our, our attendees to log off.
Sorry, okay, yes.
Uh, Peter?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michelle Bailey, yes. Um, and my one last question is, are we, can we excuse Vinnie and Tom from coming to the executive session? Great.
Sure.
Super. Have, have a fantastic night to you two.